We have a quorum. I call the meeting to order. We have a few items of business first. There are a couple committee chairs who are going to offer a few brief remarks. I'll start first by recognizing Lynda Lee Sheridan of the, is it the Milton 350th? And maybe you'll convey whether it's the last one or the next one we're talking about tonight, just curious.
350th was a couple of years ago, but it's a continuation of the fun that we had. I'm Lynda Lee Sheridan, town meeting member, precinct nine.
Brian Kelly, town meeting member, precinct seven. We're here tonight to invite you to the biggest fireworks celebration that Milton has ever had.
So we're here to represent, we are Milton, and this year we present our third annual Milton Music Festival and fireworks, and it's going to be held the weekend of June 25th and 26th. Starting on Saturday, the 25th, from 3:00 PM to dark, when the fireworks will go off, we have some great entertainment planned, so you can bring your chairs and your blankets, and you can purchase plenty of yummy food from the vendors that will be there while enjoying the spectacular view of Boston from our own Hutchinson Field. We have a very special event, Bugsy Moran and the Trouble Boys, direct from New York City, will be our headliner and will welcome in the fireworks. Brian, what makes these fireworks different this year?
I'm glad you asked, Lynda Lee. It's surveying with people around the, how many have been to the fireworks? Excellent, excellent. Okay, but in asking people, you know, what did you think of the fireworks, some people say, well, they were all right. Well, we don't want all right. So we met with the people from Atlas Pyrotechnics, and they said, we said, you know, we need some more fireworks. And the problem is, we have a barge, and they said, well, there's no more room on the barge. So we decided to get a second barge. So we're gonna have two barges, they're gonna be shooting like this, it's gonna be unbelievable. Now, we're even putting a fence, you know where the stage is up in the field? We don't want people going down Grand and Ave to watch, we want them up with the music. So we, I asked them, we need to get the vote closer to the field, to Hutchinson Field. So they said, well, we can, but we need a 350-foot perimeter, so we're putting a snow fence up behind the stage, so that we can bring the fireworks right behind the field. It's gonna be unbelievable.
Brian is always so enthusiastic. Thank you. So Saturday night will be spectacular, the fireworks will be amazing, and they'll go off just at dark, probably a little before 10 o'clock, and we hope you can join us. But then on Sunday afternoon, starting around noon time, we host Celtic Sunday, and we have a tremendous lineup of Irish bands beginning, as I said, around noon and ending probably around 8:30 in the evening. We, I'm gonna list off some of them, because some of you know Irish bands, and you'll wanna know these ones that are coming. So we have Colm O'Brien, Aaron's Melody, Sean Brennan and the Skiffs, Kara's Fancy, Brian Gaffey, that comes to us from Dublin by way of DC, Patsy Whelan and Paul Kenny, Pauline Wells and Devery, Feeny and Sons. And our headliners this year, direct from Ireland, are the Screaming Orphans. We'll have Irish food and goods to buy, there'll be games and entertainment for your children, so please join us for this brilliant lineup on Sunday. It's really some of the finest musicians the northeast in Ireland has to offer, so we hope you'll mark your calendar on June 25th and 26th, and come out and celebrate the community of Milton.
One more thing. Okay, folks, we're gonna do a little bit of marketing. If you wanna stay in touch and know what's going on, I want you to write this down right now, get your pens ready. You wanna text the word WAM, which stands for We are Milton, W-A-M, you wanna text to 555-888. And we will keep you notified of what's going on and what's coming up. Again, the number is 555-888. You folks at home, 555-888, and you're gonna, in the message line, you're gonna put WAM, W-A-M. We're also gonna have some of the folks from Milton, from the Milton Art Museum are gonna be performing on Saturday, so it's just, we have some great local artists, and it's just gonna be, some of the kids from the high school are gonna be here zip-zapping the zops, and before they go off to college, so it's gonna be unbelievable. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, I'd like to recognize Diane DiGiulio Agostino, who's gonna just give us a brief minute on the activities of the Disability Commission.
Thank you very much, Bob, for this brief opportunity. I just wanna let everyone know that about a year and a half ago, the Selectmen began appointing more members to the Milton Commission on Disability, and we have the American with Disabilities Act Coordinator, Joe Prondak, who's our building commissioner, and we have Leslie Collins, who's the secretary, Ryan O'Connell, Daniel Sacco, Nathan Bork, and Bill Enos. So if anyone has any concerns throughout the town, or even if you're visiting throughout the town and have a concern, please reach out to any one of us. We have begun amending the website, we're going to have a Facebook page to find, try to connect more and do more communication. The Eustace Estate pictures, we worked on that to make sure it's gonna be handicap accessible, those photos should be on our website soon, if you want an inside peek before it opens up. There was a townwide invitation by the committee, and about a dozen residents showed up, and they spoke about things from accessibility, from listening to the town meeting to being at town meeting. I wasn't aware that when people watch on TV, it doesn't necessarily have the capabilities for every type of disabled individual in the town to really see in real time what's happening at our town meetings, so they brought that up. From sidewalks, crossing lights, they now have, when new crossing lights come in, they have that sound, and at the meeting, one individual said, well, the reason they didn't use those lights, I think it was over in the Tucker School District, was because the neighbors didn't wanna hear the sound, but the individual who attended the meeting pointed out that the sound is adjustable, so it doesn't need to be a blaring sound. There's just two other major items. The Americans Disabilities Act celebrated its 25th year last year, and yet, every day, almost every hour of the day, someone who has a need not to be disabled by something, whether it's a sidewalk they can't get across, or it's the chemicals that we speak of here at our meeting, and it's something that we really should try to protect and assist everyone with. One resident gave it as a simple example. They said, if someone, you know, because it was years ago that the whole wheelchair promotion happened, so if someone showed up with a wheelchair, would you tell them they can't come into the building? You know, you wouldn't in this day and age, and so the same thing has to happen throughout the town. The last bit of information, handicap placards, you've probably seen it on the news lately. You know, there's a real drive to make sure that the person driving the car really is handicapped, but an additional piece of information, there is a $50 fine for driving your car with a handicap plaque. And it's not so much that you're driving with the handicap parking plaque, but it really impedes your vision. And there's been a few news stories where a child was hit and killed in Boston, and another individual in Wamuth, and there's the car sitting there with a handicap placard. So we greatly appreciate your few minutes tonight, and thank you very much.
Then three other brief announcements. The other part of my job, as you know, is filling committee appointments, and so Barbara Martin of the Selectmen's Office was kind enough to put an application form up on the entry table, if you are interested in serving in a committee, because you're not always doing enough as a town meeting member. But if you are interested, the forms are up there, you can turn them into the Selectmen's Office, or we could collect them tonight, and we'd be happy to entertain your offer for further service, so thank you for that. Next, in somewhat timely, I think you, if you were like me, you received your town report today in the mail, which was fortuitous, and I thought it was interesting that it had a picture of a longtime public servant in our town, M. Joseph Manning, who we recognized at last year's annual town meeting upon his passing. Well, I think it came out in the news today that his wife, Audrey Manning, passed away just within the last, I think, 24 or 48 hours. And I thought it might be worth just a comment, I never personally met Mrs. Manning, but it was evident from comments that came in to me on email and comments that people have made here tonight, that she certainly had an impact on our town and to many of you individually, so I hope you'll keep her soul and your thoughts and your prayers. And lastly, one other item, I received another note from our members, and again, also I thought this was timely. As you know, there was the opening of the new synagogue, just down the road, on Sunday. And one of the members pointed out that tomorrow is, in the U.S., Celebration of Holocaust Remembrance Day, which is celebrated, I found out, in different countries, but tomorrow is in the U.S. And so I looked up this quote that I thought was, it's quite prominent, you may have heard of it, it's from one named Martin Neemolder, who was a prominent Protestant pastor who emerged as an outspoken public foe of Adolf Hitler, and spent the last seven years of Nazi rule in concentration camps, and he's remembered for this quotation. First they came for the socialists, and I did not speak out, because I was not a socialist. Then they came for the trade unionists, and I did not speak out, because I was not a trade unionist. Then they came for the Jews, and I did not speak out, because I was not a Jew. Then they came for me, and there was no one left to speak for me. So we can also keep those 20 million souls in our prayers as well. With that, thank you for your prompt attendance last night and tonight. I believe if we run this well, we can complete tonight's business tonight in two nights overall. Based on the motions of last night, we're gonna resume our first article, it's Article 27, which you should find on page 50, if everyone's oriented. Recommended that the town appropriate the amount shown in the following tabulation under the heading "recommendation," cemetery, and I'll just go to the totals. Total cemetery, $769,403, and that to meet said appropriation, the sum of $769,403 be raised from the tax levy. The department is hereby authorized to sell or exchange old equipment to furnish additional funds for new equipment. Does anyone wish to speak to this motion? Mr. Secretary of the Warrant Committee?
Thank you, everybody, for the opportunity to take a couple of hours and delay this vote, so that we could, so that we could look into some new information that we received yesterday. Apparently, there was a very recent staffing change in the cemetery that resulted in an increase in their salary line, which will impact their fiscal year '17 budget. The total potential increase could be $16,006. After discussing with the trustees and with the superintendent of the cemetery, we believe that there may be a little bit of room within their seasonal and overtime budgets in order to absorb some of that increase, and the warrant committee has recommended that the cemetery come to the warrant committee next year to request a reserve fund transfer to make up any difference, because certainly, a change in staffing at this late date qualifies as an unforeseen event, and would therefore qualify for a reserve fund transfer. The cemetery would then submit a fiscal year '18 budget that would rectify the situation going forward. So it is the recommendation of the warrant committee that we accept the article as written in the warrant. Thank you.
Does anyone wish to speak to this motion? All those in favor of the recommendation of the warrant committee, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It's unanimous. Now we'll move to Article 29, which you should find on page 52. I'll recognize Mr. Leroy Walker, chairman of the school committee.
I'd like to say a few words about the fiscal '17 budget, the budget process, and, hello? Good evening again. Leroy Walker, town meeting member, precinct 10, chair of the school committee. I'd like to say a few words about the fiscal '17 budget, the process that we went through, and some of the challenges that we still face. I'd like to start, though, with a few recognitions. This process was very unique in some ways. I've been involved in the town's process for building the budget for the last 11 years, six on the warrant committee and the last five on the school committee. This one was unique in a number of ways, not so much in the extraordinary cooperation that I saw, and I'd like to thank the Board of Selectmen, the warrant committee, my school committee colleagues, school administration, town administrator, and the town accountant. But the unique part was that there were a number of significant changes, positive changes on the revenue side. So we started off talking about $750 million in, $750,000 in cuts to the school budget, and I stand before you now recommending a budget that has no cuts. That's significant. There are a number of individuals who were quite involved in that process, and quite involved with the school committee over the last three years, who decided to look for other ways to serve the town. But if you would, I'd like to recognize Becky Padera and Mike Zulis for their work over the last three years. Next, proof that this town is full of individuals that are passionate about the town and willing to commit their time and energy, I'd like to recognize Elaine Craghead and Margaret Eberhart, our two new school committee members. And then finally, an individual who flies well below the radar, but as you heard in the warrant committee presentation, even though we're not talking about a contingent budget, and this was one of our recommendations and desires, that was to do tuition-free full-day kindergarten, we were able, with the help of the warrant committee, to find a way to do that in the context of this budget. Ada Rose Marin is an individual who has worked tirelessly on full-day kindergarten and early childhood issues for years and years, and I'd just like to recognize her as an individual who has given much to this town, and I'd like to say thank you. Thank you. So I'm pleased to report that the state of the Milton Public Schools is very good. There is evidence of that everywhere we look. Our seniors are being accepted to some of the finest post-secondary institutions in the country. Participation on advanced placement tests continues to increase, and the number of students who are excelling on those tests continues to increase. Our high school was recently designated by U.S. News &amp; Royal Report as being in the top 10% of high schools in the state. Our athletic teams, our clubs, some of our artists, and some of our musicians have all enjoyed statewide recognition, and in some cases, national recognition. And then finally, I am pleased to report that the advancement initiatives that you've supported over the last year, two years, three years, have shown some dramatic results in terms of student achievement and increases in achievement. So what we look to the future for is, one, to continue to sustain that success. That will take resources, and it will take hard choices. In addition, as you might guess, the work is not done. There are areas where we would like to see improved performance. Math and science, and some of our special ed students, there are some proficiency gaps, and areas where we're challenged in terms of inclusion, and we expect that those challenges will continue. This year's budget starts to get at some of those challenges, but as you heard from the warrant committee presentation, we built two budgets. We built a non-contingent budget, which is what we're talking about, and we built a contingent budget. In the contingent budget, there were a much more aggressive set of initiatives that we thought could address academic achievement, could address what we feel should be a robust set of extracurricular activities, and finally, social, emotional well-being. Those are things that we believe are all critical to the education of the whole child. So I think the choices that you'll see, and I'll ask the moderator to recognize the superintendent and our assistant superintendent for business in a moment, but the challenges that I would like to leave you with, and the question I would like to leave you with, is this. If, as you have in the past, you believe that the schools are an important asset, and if you believe that our job, that you've entrusted us with, is to find a way to make sure that every student has the most positive and robust educational experience that they can in the Milton Public Schools, then we will need to invest. The good news is that you've supported us in many, many ways, and I'm reporting that those investments have paid off. Looking forward, we will need to continue to invest, and we will need to find a way to not go six or seven years without an override. I will defer to town meeting, because I trust your collective wisdom on when the right time is, and ultimately, the Selectmen will decide when to put such an override on the ballot. But what we found when we started this planning process was that, over the years, because every year we have a shortfall in revenue, sometimes it's $750,000 for the school share, sometimes it's less than that, but the cumulative effect of the cuts in personnel and the cuts in programs have an impact. And we have an aggressive agenda, as you've heard, we still have some major challenges. The good news is, we're operating from a position of strength. We have a school district that is, I think, one of the best in the state, and we've got an administrative leadership team that I'm sure is one of the best in the state. So that's good news, but we will need to continue to invest resources in this school district. So I will leave you with that, and ask that the moderator recognize our superintendent, Mary Gormley, and our assistant superintendent for business, Glenn Pellicek. Thank you.
While they come to the podium, I'll take a moment to read the recommendation. It's recommended that the town appropriate the amount shown in the following tabulation under the heading "recommendation" for schools, and the total school budget is $43,614,300, and that to meet said appropriation, the sum of $42,664,300 be raised from the tax levy, and that the sum of $950,000 be raised from funds certified by the Department of Revenue as free cash, and this is submitted by the Board of Selectmen. Chair recognizes Mary Gormley.
I'm here tonight to present the Milton Public School Budget Presentation with Dr. Glenn Pellicek, our assistant superintendent, and with us tonight is Janet Sheehan, our assistant superintendent for curriculum and personnel. To begin our presentation tonight, Glenn? To be, oh, so this isn't working, all right. For our, I think the teacher in me is just gonna move. The vision of the Milton Public School system is to build and strengthen a dynamic community that challenges all students to thrive and achieve, and we wanted to capture tonight's presentation with two achievements. As Chairman Walker said, our students, your children, your neighbors' children, are excelling at the state and national level, and we have a Milton High School senior who's going to travel to Carnegie Hall to be recognized for this piece of artwork, and we have a Milton High School freshman who ran the second fastest 100-meter in the nation. Big round of applause for those two students. Thank you.
I get the ones with the numbers. To give a brief overview of how the budget changed from last year to this year, we have the fiscal '16 budget there at $40 million, the fiscal '17 request at $43.6 million, including a $950,000 commitment of one-time funds, free cash, to help fund one year of the full-day kindergarten, and we'll talk about that in just a couple minutes. In the salary, just to break down the costs that make up this difference this year, in the salary lines, we have negotiated agreements, and I'll go through these in a couple of moments. We have a cost of a quarter million dollars in special education aids, which we're calling out a little separately because of the sort of unique cost of that this year. That's not something we normally see, but we wanna talk a little bit about that. We have a new classroom, the Partners Classroom, this is for children on the autism spectrum. We have currently two classrooms, this is a third one, we will be added into the system based on needs, and so we have to talk about the cost of that as well. We had two new special educators that we had to add. We had a program review, a study this year, which recommended a variety of improvements to our special education program. These two are the top priorities, these are driven by the needs of our students. Again, we'll talk a little bit about the need for those two new positions. The next one is a deficit, because last year, we had some money that was given to us in one-time funds, and that's not going to be replicated this year, so that's a negative coming off of our spending. $150,000 for full-day kindergarten, we'll talk about that, why we are able to fund tuition-free full-day kindergarten with that amount of money in a recurring budget, as well as the $950,000 in one-time funds. Our advancement preschool, we'll talk a little bit about, we have several preschools. Preschool is the largest, most quickly growing portion of our population. Children with special needs, we service from age two years, nine months, and up, so this is a growing population that we serve, and we'll talk a little bit about that, and some extended learning costs of $20,000, and we'll mention that as well. On non-salary lines, again, we had $330,000 in one-time funds last year that will not be used again this year, so that's coming off. Additional special education tuition, this is extra tuition for out-of-district placements. We spend roughly $4 million a year in out-of-district placements, and that goes up annually. Part of the new Partners Classroom, for the children on the autism spectrum, is a contract that is part of the same extra class I mentioned a moment ago, we'll talk a little bit about this, this is a contract to help oversee it, to buy the curriculum and so forth, and small amounts in technology, text materials, and instructional supplies. An interesting one, maintenance utilities going down. Due to work with Bill Ritchie and the Consolidated Facilities Department, we signed a new power purchase agreement effective July 1st of '17, a two-year agreement that is actually, in the first half year of its implementation, from January through June of '17, is gonna save just the schools $70,000 from our budget, and the town, symbol in numbers, and over two years, it's a considerable savings, in excess of $300,000 in utility costs for the town. And so that was a lot of good work done by Bill Ritchie and the Consolidated Facilities Department. So the single biggest part, of course, is negotiated wage agreements. We have negotiated, as you may have read, all agreements with all of our unions, the four unions within the Milton Educators Association, and ASME, which represents our custodians, and food service workers. Just very briefly, we settled contracts for 2% for each of the next three years, and in addition, the unions agreed that in year two and year three, they would assume a larger percentage of the health insurance costs. Currently, our unions pay 20% of their health insurance costs, in year two of this contract, it will go to 22, in year three of this contract, it will go to 24. So that is a savings to the town's general budget in the group insurance that our unions have agreed to, so that's part of this package. The salary agreement- The salary agreement includes the rollover of all staff, except the SPED aides, which we're just going to talk about separately, includes the steps, lanes, anticipated colas, does not include advancement salaries from last year that are not being replicated this year, and does not include the two new special education positions I alluded to a minute ago, and we'll talk about those separately. Mary?
On what page, Glenn?
It's the AIDS.
You've come over here and just found it.
Okay.
Now, we're going to address the differences between the FY '16 and '17 budget differences. We have, in the Milton Public Schools, education paraprofessionals. And when we speak to paraprofessionals, students who have special needs enter into what I call a contract with the school district, and these contracts are called individualized educational programs. And in many of these contracts, we have to hire paraprofessionals to be in the classroom or to actually be with the student all day. This is a very large part of the Milton Public School budget. So, again, these paraprofessionals are driven by these contracts. In FY '16, the budget number was $1.8 million. $1.25 million came from federal grants. We have always received this special education federal grant. As you'll see in this presentation, that grant remains the same number of dollars. $550,000 from the general budget, and that funded, this year, 57.3 FTEs of full-time paraprofessionals. Again, as the ed plans are being written now, and we trace our history, and we look to next year, we actually know the children who will be coming into the district at three. We've done our kindergarten registration. We know the children who will be joining us in kindergarten. We're estimating that we have to increase the FTEs to 64.3 FTEs. So, again, $2.5 million will be the cost of that. Again, I referenced that the $1.25 million from the federal grant remains the same, but we have to increase the general budget to $800,000 to fund these paraprofessionals. That's a 14% increase in the total cost, but 47% increase to the general fund because the federal funding, as I've said twice before, remains the same. So that's going to be an increase to the Milton Public School budget of $255,000, $400, $255,000. The Partners Class, Glenn referred to the Partners Class. We have addressed town meeting, those of you new to town meeting and those that are viewing. We have students with special needs who go to out-of-district special education schools. And so, our goal, through the school-building project enabled us with space, our goal is to have all of Milton's children going to school in the Milton Public Schools. But families, parents, and guardians, when their child is identified with a need, they can go out and visit special education private schools. And so we've been developing programs that are costly, but they're not as costly as sending these children out of district. But even more important than the cost is these children have, some of them have commutes up to an hour each way, and they're not going to school with their neighborhood children and the children who live in their town. So this warrant committee, this school, the past school committee, the selectmen, and you saw the vision of us partnering with the New England Center for Children. They have a school in South Pearl and Dubai, and they have a very clever idea that they'll partner with public school districts so that you can create the program within your school. So Glenn referred to earlier, we know the children coming up through our preschool. We know the children in town who are two-years-old, 2.9 when they have the evaluation, coming to the district. We have six new kindergarten students on the autism spectrum who are coming into the Milton Public Schools. They've been in our preschools. They will each require, we need to hire one new special education teacher at a cost of $61,000. The needs of these children that we already know will require five special education, five special educational assistants. I referred to these individuals before, but three have been reassigned within our staff. That's a cost of $61,000. And, again, partnering with NECC requires us to contract with them for the curriculum and training at a cost of $55,000. So that will be an increase of $122,000 to the Milton Public School budget. But, again, that costs, it's an investment that these students will stay in the Milton Public Schools and not have to be placed in private placements. Glenn, will you move it up? Two special education positions, the increase of positions. Glenn referred to, by law, by the Department of Education, we're to study a part of our special ed program each year. This past year, at the cost of $42,000, we went out to bid. We hired PCG, who came in, they did focus groups with parents, they observed in classes, they met with teachers, and they produced a report that's online. They presented at the Milton School Committee, and you can see their report if you go to our site. They made a list of recommendations of increase in staff that we should hire next year. When we develop this budget, we work with our administrative team. We meet, as Mr. Walker said, every week with our finance subcommittee and the larger school committee, and the two positions that are really needed, the first one is a board-certified behavioral analyst. This individual is very, again, specialized in their training in the world of special education and do evaluations of children. This year, as Glenn has indicated to us several times, we've gone beyond the one person we have on staff, and we've had to go into contracting that person. When we hire a second BCBA, as we refer to them, this is actually going to be a cost savings when we look out after two or three years to the Milton Public School budget. We're putting hiring that position in the budget. And then, another need of students, some students who have special needs, is that they have receptive language issues with their reading and their English skills. And we really are able to move our special ed teachers, driven by the age levels of the children in the district. And it's very unusual that we have children with these language-based issues, usually at two levels. Next year, the needs of the children, the IEPs, require that we have to create a language-based classroom at the PS middle school. So we will have language-based program at the elementary, the middle, and the high school. These two positions were at the top of the PCG list, and they were really the list at the top of the need of the administration team. So that's going to be another increase of $123,000 to the Milton Public School budget
Full-day kindergarten, tuition-free full-day kindergarten. Currently, between state grant and the tuition we charge, we take in about $1.1 million a year to help support the full-day kindergarten program. When we brought it onboard 10 or more years ago, the commitment was that we didn't want to spend any more taxpayer money than we were currently spending on the program. We wanted to make the extension of it to full-day at no cost to the town. The problem with that is, above other things, the grant funding has been canceled twice in the last two years and only put back at the last minute by the legislature. So that is an ongoing battle, and we're being told by even the legislative allies we've had over the last two years that it's not likely that this grant will see the light of day in the same way that it's been for the last several years. So that money is likely to go away. And so we were looking at the possibility of bringing it on as free full-day kindergarten. And the way we could do that is, as I'll go into in just a second, we do get quite a substantial amount of Chapter 70 aid if we do not charge for tuition, because of some formulas that the state uses, which I'll talk about briefly in a second. But the problem is, you get it a year and arrears. You don't get that money until a year after you have done away with your tuition, which means there's this gap year. And so we were looking for a way to try to make up the gap, and this year, with the concurrence of the warrant committee and the Board of Selectmen, we're able to use some of the free cash that we have on hand to get us over the hump for this year, to the tune of $950,000, which we expect is going to be the additional Chapter 70 aid coming in when we eliminate tuition. $150,000, though, we are going to have to make up with our own funds, and so that's the ongoing cost of free full-day kindergarten. Now, several people have asked, why is it that doing away with tuition brings us that much money when it seems we only get about $10,000 from the state? The problem is, although we get about $10,000 per student from the state, that's not how they determine what we get, because that would be too easy. The state instead uses two different formulas. They use a foundation budget, which basically says, given the size of your number of students you have, their demographics, the number of special needs students, the number of buildings you have, number of teachers you have, and so forth, this is how much it should cost to run your system. And it's a number that they work out based on a formula that only a real geek could And then, they have a second formula, because one is never enough, on the minimum local contribution, which analyzes your town's demographics and says, what's the median income of the town? What's the equalized property value of the town? What are the various different features of the town that would determine how much your town should contribute to the schools? And then Chapter 70 is simply the difference between those two things. It's, you know, how much it should cost less, how much you should be expected to pay. So eliminating tuition actually adds about $3,700 for each kindergarten student to the foundation budget, because a half-day kindergarten student is counted as $3,700 for the foundation budget, the full-day kindergarten student is counted as $7,400 for the foundation budget. So by taking our 320-ish kindergartners and moving them from half-day to full-day, it actually increases our foundation budget by roughly $1.1 million. That doesn't actually affect the amount of money that the town is expected to contribute, because that's the demographics of the town, and by not charging for full-day kindergarten, we haven't changed the demographics of the town. The town still has the same property value, it still has the same average income, and so forth. The one thing that does change a little bit is, as we all know, Milton has never gotten large amounts of Chapter 70 aid, and so we would get, we have in the past gotten what's called some shortfall aid, because Milton actually contributes more than 85% of our foundation budget. If the foundation budget goes up, our expected contribution falls a little below 85% of the foundation budget, and so some of that little shortfall aid we've got would go away. So instead of getting a million one, we anticipate we will get about $950,000 in additional Chapter 70 the following year. So that's why we believe we can use one-time funds for one year, and then, moving forward, the additional Chapter 70 should pick that up. Some people have asked, you know, how can you be sure of that? And my answer is, this is the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. You cannot be sure of anything. It is, however, the current formula. It's our best estimate of what will go on, and Chapter 70 formula has been adapted slightly over the years, but it's not a formula that has undergone major changes over the last few years. These are the positions I mentioned earlier. We, this year, if you remember from last town meeting, we had put in two one-year positions for full-time reading specialists. They were sort of stop-gap positions to fill in gaps from some permanent reading specialists. We hired, those two positions are not recurring again next year. We also had some one-time funds in professional development for some of the new curriculum. Again, those will not be recurring next year. Wanted to speak to preschool.
One note before we leave this full-day kindergarten. The full-day kindergarten, you could be sitting there saying, why isn't full-day kindergarten required across the state? If you ask your relatives and friends who live in other school districts in other towns, you'll know that space is an issue. And so, we couldn't really do this presentation tonight with, and I had asked Mr. Hiss to put no pressure on you, but to mention, that we have full-day kindergarten classrooms in the school-building project, the Coplins and the Cunningham Foundation joined together, and they built kindergarten classrooms in each of your four elementary schools. Kindergarten classrooms are built to a different code, they have bathrooms in them, cubbies, and so we have the space. I meet with superintendents who want full-day kindergarten, their communities want full-day kindergarten, but they don't have the space. So we have the space. And as Mr. Walker said before, perhaps 15, 20 years ago, when I first met Ada Rose Marin, Ada Rose Marin began to educate this community around the value of early education and full-day kindergarten. And I remember sitting at a meeting where Bern Lovely said to Ada Rose Marin, "Full-day kindergarten will never cost the taxpayer." And through the grant and the tuition, we have held to that promise, but this is really an opportunity, looking out at Mike Zulis in the audience, it's really a 13-year public education, and no one should have, again, the fees are difficult, the transportation fees are difficult, but when we collect for full-day kindergarten, that's really charging families to go to school. And so, without that, in this community, the Coplins, the Cunningham Foundation, and the movement of Ada Rose Marin along with them, we would never be in front of you today asking you to support this. You've also, over the last three years, and the chairman, the warrant committee chairman referred to, the advancement budget. And so, very briefly, we identified, based on our student data, that we had issues in early literacy, we had science scores that we had to work on, we wanted to integrate STEM kindergarten through high school, and we had identified achievement gaps with children, it was referred to, low-income, socioeconomic, low-income African-American blacks and children with special needs. And so, based on the student data, we identified those three initiatives, and you, as a town meeting and a community, have supported us over the last three years with text materials and supplies, staff, professional development. And as Mr. Walker said, again, I could keep you here all night, and somebody groaned today when they said, "You're not going to say that." I said, "Well, we could stay here all night, because if you watch the school committee meetings or you go online, you could really watch the investment that you've made and the progress that we've made in those three areas." So, very briefly, the advancement initiative included the early literacy. And when I started my career in the Milton Public Schools, we had one preschool, and it was a class at the high school. Many of you may remember that classroom. We now have four at the Colly Court, four classrooms, three of them run sessions in the morning and the afternoon for a different group of children. That's our special ed preschool. And then, through your support, we piloted an advancement preschool, a half-day, five-days a week, and we identified, they had to come with paperwork to prove that these were children that would never be enrolled in a preschool. And everyone understands the correlation to early education and success and successful citizenship. And so, we identified those children, we had an over-enrollment, and so this would be an increase to the budget next year. Again, the documentation, we were able to run two sessions, a morning session, five-days mornings a week, and an afternoon session. And the demand was, for the demand, addressing the early literacy, and we needed a teacher in age. So that's another increase of $50,000, again, at the Tucker School. You should also know that across the district, we use the state sliding score, so we charge tuition, but we use a sliding score. And, again, three individuals in the district sit down, and they do this kind of work with families. So we meet each family where they can, and they pay tuition, which help us across the district to have been able to build these programs. The additional extended learning, over the last three years, you have funded extended learning opportunities for students, again, to close those achievement gaps, to increase our science, and around early literacy. We partnered with the Newton Public Schools in two school districts in New York and the calculus project. Dr. Giuliano, my mentor and former superintendent of the Milton Public Schools, always talked as a math person about the role of calculus in the success of a student in going off to university. The research proves now that if you're not enrolled in calculus, it's going to be very difficult for you to succeed at university. And so, we partnered, and through the advancement budget, we have identified rising eighth graders, rising eighth graders who might not succeed in calculus, and we have given them pre-teaching in the summer and then tutorials after school. So this funding of an additional $20,000 will enable us to start a third cohort. We are staying with those students every summer and after-school tutorials and working with their with their families, so that they are going to succeed in calculus and then go off to university and succeed and become contributing citizens. The extended learning that you have funded and will continue to fund, the titles of the programs, the extended day Saturday at the elementary program. I mentioned, I noted, I called out Genevieve Mottland, who is one of the advocates of the middle school PS Academy, the high school bridge program. We identified rising ninth graders who are at risk and support them in two cohorts of the Calculus Project. Again, that's an increase of $20,000 to our school budget.
So just in summary, we are required by the state to break out our budget this way in these seven major categories. That's why we're showing them to you. The important thing is here, you see where our money is going, the increases are in the instruction and special ed categories. There is a 7% increase in technology, but it's small money compared to the others. We concentrate our funding in the instructional category. You're not seeing rises in leadership or policy and administration. And just again, the summary of that first slide you saw, that our request is primarily in the instructional category. And just to call it out visually, if you look at the two larger pieces, special education and regular education instruction, 75% of our money goes right into those, 7% into support services, 7% into leadership, 7% into facilities, and the remaining very little into other parts of the operation.
And briefly, back to the advancement budget and really our report card on your investment in the Milton Public Schools. These were reported in from the principals and the curriculum leaders. At the elementary level and elementary science, the Colicock, Cunningham, and Tucker School, elementary schools, all had significant increases in the percentage of students who scored advanced and proficient in grade-five science MCAS. 10%, 8%, and 14% respective increases in their fifth-grade science MCAS. Again, you provided them with the materials, the professional development, the staff to be able to make those advances. And this science from scientists is funded in a partnership with the Milton Public Schools in the MFE, and this is the highlight of the year, the sheep brain lesson. At the middle school, Dr. Karen Spalding is very, very proud to report, in the area of science, percentages of students scoring proficient and advanced increased by 12% over the last three years. The percentage of students in the warning category decreased from 14% to 6% over the same length of time. The percentage of students with disabilities in the warning category decreased by 15% last year. The percentage of African-American black students in the warning category decreased by 11%. Again, you supported us in targeting, closing those achievement gaps, increasing science, integrating STEM, and an emphasis on early literacy. To put a face to these statistics, and I believe that this, some of the parents are guardians of these stars, are sitting right in front of me now. At the middle school, for the first time ever, again, it's like the Hawthorne effect, when you look down and everyone supports and examines, for the first time ever, peer students competed at Regis in their college, at the regional science fair, and three of our female science students from the peer school are going on to the state science fair. And Dr. Spalding, a science advocate, wanted you to know, the first time ever in the history of the Milton Public Schools. Big round of applause. Again, we have areas, as Chairman Walker said, that we have to concentrate on, but for me, as your school leader, this proves that we are employing teachers and support staff with the support of this community, that we can make these kind of strides. Your high school is your flagship. I say every year when I stand up here, I see other superintendents, and they can't say that the school district is the town, and the town is the school district. For your flagship, 97% of the students scored advanced and proficient in 10th grade English MCAS, and 90% scored advanced or proficient in 10th grade math MCAS. The next, I have to tell you, Ted Hay, Ted is a huge advocate of the Milton Public Schools, Ted Hayes. And through this process, you should know that we work and we report and we communicate weekly with the warrant committee, we meet with them three or four times, and this kind of data, Ted said to me, "You should integrate this kind of data, you should share with the, and put a face to these numbers." This is a very important number. 56% of our juniors and seniors took 591 advanced placement exams last year, and 73% of the exams received a qualifying score of three, four, or five. That's a K-12 initiative. As I say with my own nieces and nephews, you don't wake up in the 11th grade and say, "I'm going to enroll in an advanced placement course." This is an initiative, this is an achievement, this is what we want for all of our children, but it starts in those preschool classes. And again, we're very proud. When I interview individuals or families come to the Milton Public Schools, again, unbelievably supportive communities, buildings that you would want to go to work and learn in, but one of the jewels of this community is its diversity. I say that these are the most fortunate children in the United States to be able to go to Milton High School. And 30% of the students who took the AP last year were students of color. 37% students of color in our junior and senior classes. So the diversity at Milton High and in the Milton Public Schools is another one of the attributes of this school district. So on behalf of the Milton Public Schools, our 4,000 students and 500 employees, we want to thank you. And in closing, the Milton High School Girls 4x800 Relay Team competed at the 2016 New Balance Nationals in New York, and they placed sixth in the nation. The Cunningham Future Problem Solving Team, the Problem Solvers, are going to represent Massachusetts and Lansing, Michigan at the International Future Problem Solving Bowl this June. Again, our students are competing at the state and the national level. Big round of applause for those Future Problem Solvers. If you know the peer school, then you know about the peer's players. 153 of the peer students, either backstage or front stage, participate in the two plays every year. And "Once Upon a Mattress," on behalf of all of the peer students and all the support you've given them, wanted to send this in and thank you. And lastly, we heard from citizens from across this country that went to Milton High School when this feat was achieved this year during the fall football season. The Varsity Football Team finished 11-1, the first divisional title since 1963, and we could have quadrupled the individuals in this auditorium today with the calls that our high school principal took, recalling their own experiences on the football field. But again, and not being an athlete, as I readily admit, the amazing feat to me was that every student at Milton High, all 1,000 of them, thought that they were out on that football field. Now, they aren't all out on the football field, but they took such pride in the accomplishment of their peers and the pride that they built within their community, beyond their school, that's what I told them at the celebrations. You went beyond your school and you went to your community. So on behalf of the Milton Public Schools, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Gormley, Mr. Paltrow.
Could I ask one question of Ms. Gormley?
The chair recognizes Mr. Mullen.
Ms. Gormley, where did you go to high school?
Same place you did.
Thank you for clearing that up. Would anyone like to speak to this article? Seeing none, all those in favor of the recommendation of the warrant committee, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries. As you know, we completed through Article 38 last night, so we're going to jump ahead to 39, which begins on page 59 with the recommendation on page 61, if everyone's caught up. It is a lengthy article. I would entertain a motion to waive the reading. Is there a second? Any discussion on motion to waive the reading? Seeing none, all those in favor of waiving the reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. I'll summarize, the article is recommended that the town vote to amend the general bylaws of the town to add a following chapter, Chapter 23. Did anyone wish to speak to this motion? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Earl Fay, Precinct 1. A question that perhaps would be to the Board of Selectmen. Why in this article were landscaping operations specifically excluded from the article is question number one. And question number two would be, it appears as if homeowners would be affected by the article, who may want to do some of this work themselves and would be excluded. And so I wanted to try to clarify if this would, in fact, also impact the individual homeowner from doing their own work. Thank you.
Mr. Hurley, Chair recognizes, Chairman of Board of Selectmen.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mr. Moderator, with your indulgence, if Joe Prandak is here, he was really the driving force behind this, he's probably best to answer that question.
Good evening, Joe Prandak, Building Commissioner. So this is a very targeted article. Inspection Services and along with the Selectmen's Office receives a couple of dozen complaints a year about construction projects where crews are starting at unreasonable hours, usually before 7:00. On the other hand, we receive very few, if any, complaints about landscaping, or local landscaping. So this is an article that is simply directed to provide some control, because now when people call up and say, you know, "Hey, a crew next to me started at 6:00 in the morning," you need to put a stop to that, unfortunately, I have to explain to them that we don't have a bylaw that regulates that. And although I do put calls into the contractors when that's, when we know who they are, we know the address, again, we don't have a bylaw that addresses it, and it would be helpful to have that. So the way I see it working is that, that's how most of the complaints will be handled, simply by phone calls to the contractors, as opposed to a landscape bylaw, for example. If landscaping was included, it would actually involve more personnel, more attention, you'd have to go out and verify the complaint, track down the people. So it's not viewed at the moment that we have a problem with landscaping. And again, this is targeted specifically at the construction industry. And I think that's, that should do it. But I'm happy to take other questions.
Mr. Fay, did that answer your question?
Not entirely. The one aspect that concerns me is the way Section 2 is written, where it says, "No person," and then it goes on to say, "Corporation." So if I'm an individual homeowner and I've gone through the process of pulling permits and so on, and I want to build a deck, am I prevented from running my skill saw at 4:00 on Sunday afternoon?
Technically, yes, this would apply to that situation.
Then I believe you wanted to submit a motion.
I would like to submit a motion, please.
So ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Fay came up and told me in advance, he knew he had a complex motion, so we agreed on this process, he would get to answer some questions in case that cleared it up. Apparently, it has not, so he'd like to go submit a motion, which he did in writing in advance.
Well, yes, in the future, perhaps, I would love to see a landscaping article, because I think we're all woken up, more likely to be woken up by a leaf blower on a Sunday morning. But nonetheless, so what I would propose is for Section 2 of the article would be to strike that person and simply say, "No corporation or other entity." Then the article would continue as written until the very last sentence, where it would say, "The provisions of this section shall not apply to," then it would say, "A property owner who resides at said property," or "Of unpaid friends or family members who may be assisting said property owner." So I'm sorry, that's not...
So just to make sure we got this correct, we, the warrant clerk was able to make these edits live. Could you just validate that we've represented your language correctly?
No, that one includes the landscaping aspect.
So let's get this right. Could you tell us which sections to strike, so we get your motion correct?
Everything should be struck, except, perhaps I could give this to you?
Well, she's putting that up on the screen, if everyone wants to follow along in your warrant. So if you look at the recommendation that's on page 61, in Section 2, he's recommending making a change to the last sentence. So it would read, today it reads, "The provisions of this section shall not apply to regular landscaping maintenance." We'll replace that with, "The provisions of this section shall not apply to," starting with this new text, "A property owner who resides at said property," semicolon, "or of unpaid friends or family members who may be assisting said property owner," period. So it replaces the last clause and submits new language in the last clause. Does that make sense to the audience? Is there a second to this motion? Then would the warrant, is the warrant committee absorbing this? Sure. Could you explain that to the audience? Then, no, listen. That's right. That's right. So.
And that will front.
Ladies and gentlemen, we just had to consult with Town Council on a scope issue. I'd like to recognize John Flynn, Town Council.
Mr. Moderator, Tom Meeting Members, I was asked for an opinion on the scope of the proposed amendment. In my opinion, the amendment would be beyond the scope of the article for this reason. As I understand the amendment, in the last sentence, it would delete the words, "Regular landscaping maintenance," and it would substitute in its place, "A property owner who resides at the property, at said property," or, "To unpaid friends or family members who may be assisting said property owner." As I understand that proposed amendment, here's what would happen. Right now, regular landscaping maintenance is excluded, if you will, from the prohibition in the article, so it's exempted from it. If Tom Eading were to vote this amendment, it would remove that exclusion, so regular landscaping maintenance would now be included in the activity that is regulated. To me, that is expanding the scope of the article, Mr. Moderator. I'm sorry, to me, that motion proposes to expand the scope of the article for those reasons.
Did that make sense to the audience?
No.
Then.
Mr. Moderator, precinct two.
Yes, Mr. Mellon, recognized?
We would like to ask you a question about the scope. This article applies in section two only to a person who is operating equipment, machinery, and various other things on the exterior of the premises of privately owned property in connection with construction, renovation, or remodeling work or operations. That's not regular landscaping. The sentence at the end of the article is superfluous. The article doesn't address the question of landscaping. It's unnecessary. I don't believe that this is beyond the scope.
Mr. Hurley?
Mr. Ma, and I'll defer to Town Council, but it would seem that if the purpose of taking landscaping out is to bring landscaping within this article as a prohibited activity, I believe it is.
Do you have a follow-up, Mr. Mellon?
I don't believe that that is the purpose of that deletion. In any event, landscaping would not be included as this amended language is. It only applies to work that is construction, renovation, or remodeling that's being done on the exterior of a privately owned dwelling. That's not landscaping. It just doesn't include landscaping. I think that that is a problem, and that's something that should be addressed, and that may be a reason why we want to rewrite this article. But I don't think that the question of scope is correct.
Because of the concerns of Town Council, I'm going to rule that the motion as it is submitted is out of scope. However, it seems that the language that is troublesome is the landscaping maintenance, not the other components of your article. So, or I'm sorry, of your motion. So if you wanted to consider.
If I'm recognized?
Yes, Mr. Fay.
To satisfy Town Council, I'd be, although I agree with Mr. Mellon, but to satisfy Town Council, I'd be pleased to have that back in, with the purpose being that I want to be sure that the owner occupied, the owner occupied property owner has the right to do some work on his property outside of those times. I think for the worker, somebody who works during the week and wants to do a project at home on a Sunday afternoon ought to have the right to do a project at home on a Sunday afternoon, if he's, if the project is being done. That's my point. And I would not want to be prohibited from using a skill saw so I can cut a piece of wood. Thank you.
Understand. So if I understand you are willing to restore the language on regular landscaping maintenance, but include, but include your language on property owner residing at said property, et cetera?
Correct.
Okay. Why don't we take a moment to get that language exactly right? And we'll, I'll read it back to the audience.
My gutter cleaner guy is an appropriation, and he makes a ton of noise. I don't know, wouldn't it? This guy wrote a check.
I don't want to be that guy.
Okay, Mr. Fay, can you confirm that the text on the screen correctly represents your motion?
It has been brought to my attention, Mr. Moderator, that I probably ought to have the word "person" back in, and I agree with Mr. Chicallo about that. So if we should put the word "person" back in.
That would be the beginning of section two?
Correct. So that we're really only adding the reds of the language at the end.
So we should read, "No person, comma, corporation."
Correct.
Can we reflect that up on the screen? Done? Okay. So the motion is represented up on the screen. I will, I'll waive the reading if the audience is comfortable with the description as it's presented up there. We'll have to, we'll get this writing to the town clerk. You need something, ma'am, quick? Is there a second to this motion?
Second.
Would anyone like to then speak to the motion to amend? I think we had Mr. Whiteside, did you want, you were in line first, did you want to speak to this motion?
I do want to speak to it. Alexander Whiteside, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Nine. I think it's fine to say that the property owner can do some work around his house other than at these outrageously restrictive hours, but what about someone who leases? My own view is that we could make this change, but there are five or six other changes that need to be made in this, and we would be well advised to think about sending this article back to the Selectmen for rewriting, rather than trying to write it here on Town Meeting Floor. This is something that really is not a, it's not ready to go at all.
Mr. Frizzetti, I think you were next to speak to this article.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Steve Frizzetti, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Seven. I agree with Mr. Whiteside. I don't think this is ready, although I do support this amendment if it is going to go forward, because I originally was going to speak, because the weekend warrior, most of us work during the day during the week, and our only time to do house projects is on the weekend, and these are some pretty restrictive language. So I would support this amendment if this does go forward. Thank you.
Anyone else to speak to this article? Yes?
Yes. You know, thank you, Mr. Moderator. You know, James Desmond, Precinct Four.
Listen loud, please.
James Desmond, Precinct Four. I just need clarification on a few things. I talked to a few contractors today, and being contractors, we have no idea what a legal holiday is. You know, is it Martin Luther King Day, Labor Day, Memorial Day, Monday holidays? That, we usually work. You know, I looked it up, I Googled it, I Googled, you know, legal holidays, and I got various, you know, is it a day the stock market's closed, the liquor stores are closed? No idea. And also, on the designee, when the building inspector's not around on holidays, you call the building inspector, nobody's there, is this going to be dumped on the police department to enforce? Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak to this motion? Ma'am, you're recognized?
Thank you, Ellen Denoyer, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Two. I'm very sympathetic to the weekend warriors. I have many of them as lovely neighbors. But my concern is that by excluding property owners, that would therefore mean that a property owner could do this work at one in the morning, or three in the morning. And I think that an alternative approach would be to revise the hours to be less restrictive. And I would suggest, perhaps, and I guess I'm commenting on the amendment, so I'm suggesting to the proponent of the amendment, that perhaps an alternative way of doing this would be to just say, 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., seven days a week. Because I personally don't want neighbors, you know, working at 3:00 a.m. either, even if they live in the property, so, thank you.
Ma'am, can I, are you, do you have a specific request to make a friendly amendment to the motion?
Can I? I'm not quite clear.
Or just had a general comment?
I'm not quite clear on the mechanism. So if I can make a friendly amendment to the amendment, then yes, I would suggest 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., seven days a week, and that I think that that would generally allow, again, bearing in mind that this is only exterior work, that that would generally accommodate most homeowners' needs.
Mr. Fay, do you accept that friendly amendment? I'll let you think about that. Would anyone else like to speak to this motion? Yes, ma'am? We're currently still discussing the motion as written up on the, on the chart.
And to support the, the women, woman who's just, oh, Joan Giancarzki, Precinct One. In support of the woman who just spoke, suggesting Monday, well, every day of the week from seven to seven, I would like to support that, because as I look at the days and the time, there is quite a restriction on Sunday. I am making an assumption that this is because for many of us here, and many people in the town of Milton, that is a day of worship. However, Saturday is also a day of worship for many Milton Town residents, and I believe that if that is the intent for the shorter hours on Sunday, then we should relook at that to, if you're going to restrict days of, use, do, using days of worship for restrictive hours, I would say that it should be consistent with Saturday, but I would support neither. My suggestion is, as the woman prior to me spoke, that it would be 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., seven days a week. Thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Howe, we have a response to that from the Chairman of the Warrant Committee.
I just wanted to add that the Warrant Committee did ask that question about the restriction of hours on the weekend being related to hours of worship, and Mr. Prandak, who wrote the article, said that he based it on what other communities had done, and that it was not related to hours of worship, but that people had expressed interest in having more hours of quiet time on Sunday than Saturday. If you had to restrict hours on a certain day, he said that Sunday was, was the day. It's a little bit arbitrary, but he said it was not tied to any religious observation, but just that noise is noise, and we wanted some quiet hours somewhere on the weekend.
Mr. Howe?
Richard Howe, Precinct Three. I think we've got enough noise with all the airplanes flying over, and I support the original article, because I don't see anything, someone should be able to do their work between 8:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. on Saturdays, and after 3:00 p.m. on Sunday, I think it's time to call it quits. And let's keep the noise down in the town.
Yes, ma'am, you're recognized?
Cheryl Tagayas, Precinct Nine. I think we should think about separating the hours for the professional versus the resident, because you could be, have, living next to a new subdivision under construction where your contractor could work seven days a week, 12 hours a day, and that might be too much noise.
Mr. Zulus, you're recognized?
Good evening, Mr. Moderator. Mike Zulus, Precinct Three, Town Meeting Member. I'm sympathetic to Mr. Whiteside's view for the following additional language reasons. I don't believe a corporation or other entity can operate equipment, so I think the language I'd suggest would be, "No person or person employed by or working on behalf of a corporation or other entity shall operate equipment." Second, I'm not sure what regular landscaping maintenance means, and I would suggest that maybe we just delete the word "regular," unless there is a general understanding as to what regular, excuse me, regular landscaping maintenance means. So I would offer those as friendly amendments, although I am more sympathetic, I think, to Mr. Whiteside's view, that this may be better to go back to work on the language a little bit.
Chair recognizes Mr. Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Brian Walsh, Precinct Eight. Frankly, I, Mr. Fay, I am not in support of your motion to amend, only because I thought you and others have raised some significantly real issues. I'd like to see landscaping companies advertised ahead of time, so this would be in scope, to have some restrictions. Frankly, most of us don't have construction going on in their neighborhood. I do right now, by the way. But most of us do have landscapers, and so I think there's, to actually Mr. Whiteside's point, I think there, and Mr. Zulus, there are a number of issues here. The Town Meeting Floor is not a good venue to clean up. Not to say that it was a good faith effort on behalf of Mr. Prandak, it was. So I'm inclined to ask the members to vote against the motion to amend, only because I think the practical cause for this will be then to come up and make a motion to amend that asks this to be sent back to the Board of Selectmen for further study. Thank you.
So, Mr. Fay, you have a, is there anyone else wish to speak? Yes. Ma'am?
Diane DiTulio Agostino, Precinct Eight. Summertime is coming, and our Building Commissioner has put a lot of thought and time into this because he's received a ton of com- because he's received a ton of complaints. I know down on Randolph Ave, when the building across from St. Elizabeth's was constructed, the work was going on well before 7:00 a.m. and well after 7:00 p.m., seven days a week. I know that location doesn't necessarily impact a lot of people, but I heard also from the people where the Milton Women's Club was, and so for Mr. Prondak, whose time is so limited, because his department really does need more people, I think that we're going into summer, and whether or not we, I know we're speaking to the motion, whether or not we approve the motion, I think it's important to put something in place so that Mr. Prondak can do the work he needs to do, and his department can do the work he, they need to do, especially with summer coming up. The noise going on by these contractors, and I'm married to one, he will not start at those hours. He doesn't want to hear from neighbors, and I just think it's common courtesy. I have great respect for our building department, and I'm hoping that we can pass something, and we can always amend it later. We certainly do amend enough things, but to send it back right before summertime doesn't make sense. Thank you.
So, Mr. Fay, you have a decision on accepting the friendly amendment? Of the hours of 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., seven days a week, or reject it?
Well, Mr. Moderator, I don't actually accept that, because I, I do believe it's reasonable to put some restrictions on the earlier side, that someone may want a little extra rest on the weekend and not want to be woken up at 7:00, as I believe one could do under the friendly amendment. My primary concern here is actually, I do agree with landscaping, and I had landscaping as part of it. Whether that now would create it out of scope, I, I don't know. But I do believe that the owner of the property who resides there ought to have the right to, on the weekend, do some of the work if he chooses or she chooses to do so. That is my primary concern with this. I would like to send the entire article back for further discussion, so that, that would be my, my preference, but absent that, then I would like to be able to come back and revisit this.
Well, the motion before the body is to amend the article-
So if I may withdraw and bring it back up, should it not go-
You are welcome to do so.
-our way, then that's what I would be happy to do, is withdraw the motion.
The motion is now withdrawn. Okay. Then at the moment, the only motion before the body is to approve the article. Is there a motion to refer back to the planning board? Mr. Whiteside?
I'd like it referred back to the selectmen.
You have a motion to refer to the selectmen? Thank you.
But referred back, indeed.
Dodged a bullet there, didn't you? Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Would anyone like to speak to the motion to refer this back to the selectmen? Mr. Chinman, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I just Googled model noise restriction ordinance, and there's a full Google page of them. The work has been done by other people, and I think the selectmen should take advantage of work done, including by the EPA, has a very lengthy noise model ordinance, which addresses all sorts of noises, including construction. So I, I endorse the Mr. Whiteside's motion.
Ms. DeNoyer?
Thank you, Ellen DeNoyer, Precinct 2. I think if the article is going to be sent back, I think there are a couple other questions that I have of things that perhaps should be studied further. One is, in the event of an emergency, a written permit may be granted. It's not quite, I'd like to understand more about how that process would work, because obviously, an emergency, emergency would not allow time for a written permit, so I'm not quite sure how that works. I understand the goal of having exceptions for emergencies, but I think some clarity about how the permit process would work in an emergency. And the other is that it only applies to privately owned properties, and I'm not sure whether there are other properties within the town that this should also apply to. So those, I think, are really questions for further consideration. Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak? Mr. Trachis?
Chris Trachis, Precinct 10. If this does go back for further study, could someone think about mentioning exterior? If windows are open, someone's using a power saw, cutting wood, and I'm saying this because this happened to me last summer with helping a friend of mine. It was maybe 8:30 at night, not in Milton, someplace else. Someone complained. You know, I try to normally keep the peace, so we just stopped, but, you know, it's something to think about. You know, you have a power saw, it makes a lot of noise, you're cutting wood, windows are open, that's interior, it's not exterior, so just maybe something to keep in mind. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak to the motion to refer? Seeing none, all those in favor of the, I'm sorry, we need a recommendation from the Warrant Committee. You're ready? Thank you. Let's speak first, Mr. Chinman?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Yeah, it, I mean, it seems like there are some issues with this article, clearly. I mean, the intent of this article was, you know, noise is noise, and, you know, and, and we do get a lot of complaints. Most of the complaints is with construction noise. I don't think that matters whether it's coming from a construction company or an individual. A perfect example, I have a neighbor behind me that runs a full-size backhoe at 4:00 in the morning, and that's not friendly. And he's the homeowner, so it can happen, you know, so, and, and I'm, I'm sure I'm not the only one that, you know, can come up with those kinds of stories. You know, you know, we, we tend to be, you know, somewhat of a rural town in areas, and people do have heavy equipment. So, you know, it, it should apply to both. You know, noise is noise. You know, that being said, you know, I will listen to the, the Warrant Committee's recommendation, you know, in, in terms of whether this should be turned back to the selectmen or not.
Chair recognizes Mr. McLean.
The Warrant Committee agrees that this article should be returned to the Board of Selectmen for further study.
All those in favor of the recommendation affirmed by the Warrant Committee to return this to the Board of Selectmen for further study, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
No.
The motion carries. That concludes Article 39. We now move to Article 40, which starts on 62, with the recommendation on 64. Again, this is a lengthy article. Second to waive the reading?
Second.
Discussion on waiving the reading? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. We need, the motion to waive carries. So it's recommended that the town vote to refer Article 40, the subject matter of this article, to the Planning Board for further study. Chair recognizes Mr. Furs.
I have a few other things I want to do real quickly while I'm up here, before we get to the task at hand. First, I'd like to recognize our newest Planning Board member, April Lamuro. That's a somewhat bittersweet announcement for me, because that means I also have to recognize Emily Innis, who will be leaving the Planning Board. Briefly want to say a few things about Ms. Innis. Emily was born and raised in Milton. She is a graduate of Milton High School, but I didn't have time to, oh, sorry!
Not born.
Not born. Oh, raised in Milton, excuse me. Graduate of Milton High School, but I did not have time to track down her yearbook picture, so I'm sorry about that. Emily's a professional planner, so we've been very fortunate as a town to have her experience and dedication as a volunteer for so long. She actually started, or served on the Warrant Committee for, for quite a while. She was Chair of the Warrant Committee as well. And during the Warrant Committee, she got to serve on the zoning subcommittee, and I believe that contributed to her run for Planning Board, according to a newspaper article I found. She, in her 10 years on the Planning Board, had quite a lot of impact on our town. She was a major player in the creation of our most recent master plan, and in the development of an implementation committee, to see that our hard work on that master plan does not just sit on a shelf. She worked hard to create visibility into the mysteries of our zoning and planning process in Milton. She's done workshops on the master planning process, and she's encouraged, and in some cases required, informational sessions on some of our new zoning initiatives, which makes for a better informed public, and also a more thoughtful and comprehensive draft bylaw for us all to review. She's participated in many exciting new developments in our town over the past 10 years. She's participated in bringing six new restaurants to our town, three in East Milton and three in Milton Village. She participated in getting, in, excuse me, getting special permits to continue the operations of two local and established nursery businesses, and she has participated in several major residential projects, including the Milton Hill House, Woodmere at Brush Hill, and the expansion of Brushwood on Brush Hill, as well as a mixed-use development on 36 Central Avenue. So with all that said, Emily's going to be very much missed at our Planning Board meetings for her talents, her experience, her knowledge, and her history with the town. For her humor and her humility, she brought all of these to all of our meetings. All of us on the Planning Board want to thank Emily for her service, especially for her past decade of service to the Milton Planning Board. We also want to thank her husband, Ewan, for allowing her to dedicate all of this time to us, and we wish and hope that this is a respite, not a retirement. So thank you very much, Emily. Okay, thank you for indulging me in that, and can leave my glasses off, because I wrote the next one in bigger print. All right, so I'm going to actually take a few minutes to speak about the next four articles, so that you only have to see me once. The next four articles were all submitted by the Planning Board. I'm going to start with the easiest article and work backwards, if you don't mind. So Article 43 is basically a organizational issue. It's correcting an error in the zoning bylaws that's essentially a numbering issue, or a lettering issue in this case. It's really a non-substantive change, and we're asking that you vote in favor of the Warrant Committee's recommendation to correct this error. Working backward from there, Article 42 is actually a tax bylaw, so I'm going to talk a little bit about it and then explain our recommendation. This was submitted in conjunction with a proposed bed and breakfast bylaw, which I'm going to speak to in a moment. You're going to see that our recommendation on the bed and breakfast bylaw is actually to send that back to the Planning Board for further study, but I believe that Article 42 may be relevant in any case. We've actually heard, oh, sorry, excuse me, 41, Article 41, excuse me. There's actually an opinion within Inspeccional Services that we've heard that bed and breakfast with less than four guest rooms may already be allowed in our bylaw. And when you combine that with the fact that Milton has currently at least four in bed, four bed and breakfasts operating under the Airbnb platform, that are not regulated, since we have no bylaw, taking these into consideration, it, it may be wise for the town to consider having some opportunity for us to collect a sales and use tax for these type of uses, whether or not they're regulated by a zoning bylaw or not, because they are seemingly happening in any case. However, regardless of whether or not the Planning Board believes that these are relevant, we got a little ahead of ourselves and quickly learned that we don't have the authority to submit a tax bylaw to this body for consideration. So as such, we'd like this body to consider sending that bylaw to the Selectmen for further study, and we can take this up if the Selectmen deem necessary at a later date. So that's with regard to Article 41. Now for the articles that are of the most substance, I think, for the purposes of discussion, which are Articles 40 and 41. And just to give you brief background and some commentary, then we can kind of go from there. With the approval of Milton's Master Plan in 2015, the Planning Board began to review our zoning in the context of the master plan's overall objections, objectives, and conclusions. Initially, we spent much of the spring and summer of that year thinking about a new sign bylaw, a bylaw to deal with the additions and modifications to non-conforming residences in Milton, the creation of a condominium bylaw, an affordable housing bylaw, an accessory dwelling units bylaw, and other things. As the year progressed, the Planning Board began to prioritize our considerations. During Citizen Speak at our regular meetings, we started to hear from several citizens inquiring about the potential for bed and breakfasts in Milton, in conjunction with the sale of a couple of our larger state homes. And again, this combined with the Airbnb and Inspeccional Services interpretation that we've, that I spoke about just a few minutes ago, led us, led the Planning Board to vote 3 to 2 to put forward a motion to put bed and breakfast, eat bed and breakfast bylaw forward for consideration on the warrant tonight. With regard to the other, excuse me, Article 41, which is the non-conforming, sorry, 42, which is the non-conforming, excuse me, we had a local attorney come forward to talk about a proposed bylaw dealing with a non-conforming business use in a residential area. The Board at that point identified a number of sites in town that are currently improved with non-conforming businesses in residential districts, and since these sites can't be redeveloped or substantially changed without a variance or a change of the zoning bylaws through the town meeting process, the, the Planning Board again voted 3 to 2 to put forward the non-conforming business bylaw for consideration that you see on the warrant tonight. After doing this, prior to and after doing this, the Board held a number of informational meetings on both of these bylaws and made many edits to them. The bylaws were submitted to the warrant in February, but as I said, more informational meetings were held after that. And ultimately, over those past several months, the Board has concluded that more work does need to be done on these. The Planning Board has not reached consensus, as is evident by our non-unanimous votes. And while unanimous approval is not required to move a bylaw to town meeting for consideration, it is certainly a desirable goal that the Planning Board would like to put some more effort into achieving. Additionally, the public process has raised questions, and probably more importantly, the public process has raised some questions that need to be answered to avoid unintended consequences and produce the best possible bylaws that we can for this body to consider. Therefore, we're asking you tonight to support the Warrant Committee's recommendation and send both of these bylaws back to the Planning Board for further study. We will continue to work on these articles and many of the others identified over the next months and years, and that work will be done on a regular schedule that will be shared with you as Town Meeting Members and with the general public through a variety of channels. We anticipate that the formation of the Master Plan Implementation Committee, which was done earlier this year, will help us as a Planning Board prioritize where we focus our attention with regard to zoning, and we invite Milton residents and our Town Meeting representatives to speak at Citizen Speak, reach out to us at regular Planning Board meetings, and participate in this very important process. I want to personally encourage you to, any of you with interest in zoning or concerns about the zoning, to please bring forward your ideas, your concerns, your questions as part of this process. It's very difficult for the Planning Board to gauge public sentiment and the will of the Town Meeting Body when we only have a small group of individuals regularly participating in our process. And we really wish to put forward bylaws for your consideration that are well-vetted and that will represent the best ideas for our community, capturing the objectives of the majority of this body. We need to hear from you, and we ask that we do hear from you. Tonight, if you do choose to rise in, to speak about either of these bylaws, we would ask that you comment on whether or not you think these bylaws are something that we should be considering as a body. Hopefully, you will follow our recommendation and the recommendation of the Warrant Committee and send these back for further study. We have plenty of time, therefore, to work on the specifics, and I'm not sure it's a good use of all of our time to delve into a, a deep dive tonight to figure out what, what the specifics of the bylaws are. But if you do rise, we would ask you to tell us whether or not you think we should be spending our time in that way. I thank you for your time, and wish you all a good discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Furs. A registered voter contacted me in advance, requested permission. We validated his registration. He submitted a short presentation and sent that to me. It's within the scope of the article, so the Chair would recognize Stephen Minsky. Yes, sir, if you would address and introduce yourself and your address before you begin your remarks? And just a reminder, we'll keep your remarks to 10 minutes.
Absolutely. Thank, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you, Brian, for inviting comment, and thank you, everyone, for the opportunity to, I think, educate and bring awareness to a very serious problem that we have in, that we are facing in Milton. Stephen Minsky, 702 Brush Hill Road, Precinct 10. Presentation is about bed and breakfasts, and the current Article 40 that has been, pardon? Put it there. There we go. Okay. First of all, I have- First of all, I have with me a petition. Twenty neighbors got together, and we are very concerned about this bed and breakfast issue. We, together, became so concerned, we signed a petition together from members all over District 10. That's where it's been singled out for this bed and breakfast law, is for large estates. The large estates are pretty much in Districts 10 and perhaps one other. I believe there might be some of these large houses. We're, I just want to make it clear, the folks that got together, signed this petition, we are not against bed and breakfasts. I think as a concept, that's not the issue that I'd like to bring to everybody's attention today. What we are against is a lack of strong and clear guidelines, and what we are against is a lack of enforcement capabilities. And I think this is an awareness that we need to consider for all bylaws, and I think this is a good opportunity to consider these for all bylaws. And in the context of bed and breakfast gives us that chance as a learning process together. I just wanted, first of all, to start off with, what is a bed and breakfast? According to Webster's Dictionary, it all sounds very nice. What's the problem with bed and breakfasts? A service at which a price of a room also includes breakfast the next morning. Sounds nice. Done right, it should really maintain Milton's charm and blend in with the surroundings as a launching pad for destinations around Milton. Sounds very good. See, a lot of people would want to vote for a thing like that. I think it's really important, however, to say, what does Article 40 allow? And it's the bed and breakfast article, but what does it actually allow? It allows up to 40 strangers every day to be invited into 100% residential neighborhood, every day, 365 days a week. I think it's also interested that commercial activities associated with banquet halls, convention halls, event parties, event facilities, party destinations, they're not prohibited. And adding hundreds of guests and friends and their associates for parties is also not permitted, is not prohibited. So what sounds like a very nice quaint bed and breakfast story actually very much can turn into a nightmare. Ambiguity in bylaws in general, and ambiguity particularly in this bylaw, and the lack of enforceability leads to abuse. So I wanted to talk a little bit about that abuse, because I think this is a really important thing. You think about abuse, picture beer kegs, lines of over 100 cars blocking the roads to your house, gas pressures in your property, fire trucks and emergency vehicles that can't get to your house. You can't get out, strange people coming at all hours of the morning, 4:00 in the morning, hundreds of people milling about around the neighborhood. You start to think about these things, and you say, is this real? Could this happen to me? Could this happen to my house? I'd like to now share my story as a resident of 702 Brushhill Road, next to 704 Brushhill Road. 704 Brushhill Road is applying and wishes to gain a bed and breakfast license. I'll tell you a story. I was taking my garbage can on a weekday night. I was walking back in my driveway, and two young ladies came out of a car, and they said, "Would you like a good time?" And I said, "I have my garbage can here, and I'm heading back to my wife and daughter." And they said, "Oh, if you don't like us, we have other girls in the house in 704. Maybe you'd like them better." And I was a little upset with that. And they said, "You look very stressed. We have some drugs in the car. Maybe that'll loosen you up a bit. We also have some drugs in the house, if you'd like." At that point, I took my garbage can and hurried home.[861.61][861.61](LAUGHTER). I've been blocked in my house where I can't take my daughter to school on time, because we've taken the owner of this house to court. There's been here, and I'd just sort of like to produce, you know, really, that this is not Stephen Minsky, this is 20 neighbors, and here are 13 police reports on 704 Brushhill Road, a resident that currently meets all of the requirements of the bed and breakfast law. He would be, if he asked, awarded a bed and breakfast license according to the current regulations. Some say, "Well, having a bed and breakfast would make it a better situation." Well, this is the point. Who would actually enforce these laws? Thirteen times, the police have been called. By the way, I only called once. Twelve other neighbors have put in the other complaints. I think it's important, I just want to read off the kinds of complaints, suspicious activity, neighbor disturbance, alarmed burgly, burgul, you got the idea, physical threats of violence, traffic complaints, and restoring of the peace. Now, this man also happens to have, by the way, went to a nice open house, there's 12 mattresses inside and no furniture. You can imagine what is taking place in this house. The problem is, there's no evidence. It's actually, collecting evidence on such activity is extremely difficult. The zoning board doesn't have investigative powers, or if it does have investigative powers, it doesn't have any enforcement personnel to actually follow up on illegal activities and commercial activities and illegal activities. The police also don't have the vice squads and the personnel to do these kinds of investigations. And just, I want to point out again, the health board, which was the proposed overseer of the bed and breakfasts, there's actually 12 months now that they've not hooked up to sewer, hundreds of people. This is, they've had something like nine or 10 of these parties with several hundred people attending, and the sewer is not hooked up to town sewer, and the septic is not being emptied. It's a health issue. They've been issued a citation, but that's it. No penalties, no fines, no action. And the reason why? Our health board doesn't have the enforcement capability to do that work. It's not within their budget, and it's not within their personnel. And I think they're recognizing, I think we need to recognize, the brave work of the planning board, the brave work of the police, the brave work of the health department, but we also have to recognize that they're being given responsibilities under bylaws that they actually cannot enforce. And I think that must be very, very frustrating for those committee members, and it's very frustrating for the neighbors.
Mr. Minsky, you have two minutes left.
Two minutes left. I'd also like to point out that this is not just 20 neighbors, and this is not just one house. One house falls, all of our house is full. Ford Ranch Road should ring a bell to many people here. This is not the story of 704. Prior to 704, Ford Ranch Road, wild parties, drugs, much the same thing that I talked about at 704. Fortunately, through the work of the police, they were able to shut that party down, and that's great news. 704, 13 complaints, bringing them to court once. It still continues because the bylaws are vague and difficult to enforce. Here are some recommendations of what's missing from Article 40. And since I have two minutes, I won't go into all of them, but I think it's really important, and I applaud Brian in saying, that why are we ruling? So just kind of going down these. One, I think it's really important to reduce the number of units, 50 people in a purely residential area. We talked about one buzzsaw going off. How'd you like 40 people wandering around on your Sunday afternoon or your Saturday afternoon making this kind of wild noise? And by the way, it's not illegal. It's not at all illegal. Anybody can do it. And the police can't do anything about it, and the bylaws don't provide the police any ability to enforce these kinds of activities. I think it's important to look at reducing the number of units to reduce the number of impact on the community and eliminate the minimum. Why are we saying big houses? If bed and breakfasts are so wonderful, why are we saying only big houses should have them? If they're wonderful, let everyone have them, and let's do it right, and let's put together a good bed breakfast law, and let everybody have bed breakfasts. There's a lot of people that really enjoy them. I know I've stayed at several.
If you could wrap up?
So I'm just wrapping up here. I think what's really important is, again, I showed a definition of bed and breakfast, which sounds very lovely, and we talk about bylaws, and we say, okay, half the battle is to make the bylaws tighter and clearer. And I think the exercise we talked about with the buzzsaw and noise made it very, very clear that just on one paragraph, just how hard it is to really nail down the right words. But it can be done. But I think what people are missing really about the bed and breakfast law is the enforcement costs, and I think we have to take these costs into consideration. There has to be personnel added as part of the bed and breakfast law. There has to be actually enforcement personnel added to the health department. There has to be enforcement personnel added to the zoning department, and there has to be tools and bylaw rules that are actually enforceable by the police, which they are not today. And I think that's really important to consider when we think, as town members, how we vote all of these bylaws.[1229.53][1229.53](LAUGHTER).
I think that was a sign.
That was a sign.[1232.67][1232.67](LAUGHTER). So that's it.[1234.67][1234.67](APPLAUSE).
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak to this article? Mr. Corcoran?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ned Corcoran, Precinct 3, and I'm the attorney that Brian mentioned, who brought the idea of the non-conforming business use bylaw to the attention of the planning board, although I did it in conjunction and conspiracy with a couple of other attorneys who practice regularly in this area. I applaud the planning board for starting the work on this notion of addressing small properties that have long history of non-conforming uses, that are being, really being run down. If you can think about a number of these locations around town, they are not in very good shape, and they are depressing, in my opinion, the values of properties around them. The current requirements of zoning make it very difficult to reinvest in those properties. And that lack of investment, I think, is a drain on those local areas. The purpose, the goal that I had, and that I hope people will comment on, as it goes back to the planning board, is that we create a vehicle that incentivizes reinvestment.
Mr. Corcoran, just to, I interrupt, just want to make sure you're speaking to Article 40 on the bed and breakfast.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm speaking generally to both, more specifically to the latter. Would you like me to reserve my comments?
If you might, then we could dispose of 40 if your comments are more appropriate to a later article.
Happy to do that.
I'll start you afresh. Anyone else like to speak to Article 40? Yes, ma'am.
Ellen Denoyer, Precinct 2, town meeting member. I'm terribly sorry for Mr. Minsky's and his neighbors' unfortunate experiences, and I certainly would agree that that needs to be addressed. I also did generally want to say that I am in favor of a bed and breakfast article. I used to live in another community, and I lived across the street from neighbors who had a very small bed and breakfast, and it animated the neighborhood. It was lovely to meet people from out of town. It was charming. It was everything that one would hope a bed and breakfast would be. They were lovely neighbors. So I certainly agree with Mr. Minsky that the article needs to be well-written, and these concerns need to be addressed. But I do think that it's a very good way of people within the town being able to stay within their homes, keep their homes, and I think our housing stock is lovely, and I think it's a nice way of preserving that. And I would also agree with Mr. Minsky that it would be good to extend the article to smaller properties, again, in the interests of maintaining our housing stock and allowing people to remain in their homes, take in an occasional guest. So, thank you.[1413.63][1413.63](APPLAUSE).
Does anyone else wish to speak to this article? Ma'am?
Joan Giancarschi, Precinct 1. I have spent the last 30 years working for the Massachusetts Department of Public Health, 20 of those that have been in the regulatory side of public health. And if one looks at the Massachusetts regulations, there is a definition for bed and breakfast. And if there, you can go to 105 CMR 590, and just go down to definitions, and there is the definition of a bed and breakfast. And with regard to the sanitation issues that were brought up on Brushhill Road, again, you can refer to minimum sanitation and get in touch with Steve Hughes at the Massachusetts Department of Public Health, who will help you address the issues of septic tanks and other sanitation issues on the property. Thank you.[1478.67][1478.67](APPLAUSE).
Does anyone else wish to speak to this article? All in favor of the recommendation of the warrant committee, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion is unanimous. We'll move to Article 41, find at the bottom of 64. To see that the town will vote to accept the provisions of Chapter 64G, Section 3A of the Massachusetts General Laws, added by Chapter 27, Section 60 of the Action Resolves of 2009, which authorizes the town of Milton to impose a local sales tax upon the transfer of occupancy of any room or rooms in a bed and breakfast establishment or hotel, and to act on anything relating thereto. It's submitted by the planning board. It's recommended that the town vote to refer the subject matter of this article to the Board of Selectmen for further study. Would anyone like to speak to this article, 41? Seeing none, all those in favor of the recommendation of the warrant committee, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. The motion is unanimous. Article 42. Again, this is a lengthy article. The chair will entertain a motion to waive the reading. Second? All those, any discussion on waiving the reading? All those in favor of waiving the reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. The motion carries. The summary of the article is that this Article 42 is recommended that the town vote to refer the subject matter of this article to the planning board for further study. It was submitted by the planning board. Mr. Corcoran, would you like to speak perhaps to this article?
Let's get in the proper order here. Ned Corcoran, Precinct 3. I am an attorney, and I practice in the area of zoning in this town. I know I've been before this body on a number of occasions. I was the lawyer who was probably the impetus behind putting this matter forward. I conferred with other lawyers, two others in town who are particularly involved in this area. I think all of us share a concern that the lack of investment in some of these smaller properties that are being run down and are contributing to a running down of the properties around them need a vehicle through zoning that would incentivize reinvestment. The variance standard can be too difficult to achieve, and so a process that's in place that recognizes and creates incentives for property improvement while fairly protecting the interests of neighbors, I think is important. And I urge you, as members of town meeting, to engage in the process that the planning board will undertake if, in fact, we send this back to the planning board. The planning board needs to hear from us as a town meeting how we should be moving forward in this type of activity. It's very difficult at times, I think, for the planning board to act, sometimes in a vacuum, sometimes with people like me, with clients who come before them, and perhaps with director butters, but without a larger set of considerations to be undertaken. And I think it's important that this body give the planning board some degree of guidance how to move forward as we rezone our properties. This town is changing. Change happens, and it's going to continue to happen. It can be positive, or it can be negative. And I think the planning board needs our help in at least identifying whether we should be working proactively and positively to make changes, or whether we simply continue to be reactive to sometimes good and sometimes not-so-good ideas that come before them. So I urge you to participate. I thought with 30 seconds, Mr. Moderator, I could do a quick update on the Ice House, which is somewhat related to this bylaw. Just to let people know, in February--
Mr. Corcoran, that may be inappropriate to this article, I think, if you wouldn't mind.
Okay, that's fine. I just, that's fine. We'll be back.
If you have more comments on 42, please, you're well within your limit.
I don't have, really, I don't. I just urge people to engage in the process with the planning board, because I think it's too important, and it is a time where we have to engage more generally in how we consider the impacts and the changes of zoning as we move forward as a town. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak to this article? Mr. Frizzetti?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Steve Frizzetti, town meeting member, Precinct 7. And I just wanted to address the input part of that is-- part of that is whenever the selectmen have an important meeting, we get a blast email from, I don't know if it's the town clerk, or through one of the town's websites, maybe if the planning board could announce their public hearings in a similar way, more people would be able to attend. Thank you.
Ma'am, you recognized?
Hi, Denny Swinson, Precinct 5.
You might pull the mic down a little bit so people can hear.
Oh, sure.
There you go.
So I believe that any articles or bylaws that will replace or supersede what we currently have on the books should be better than what we already have in place, or at least do no harm to what we have in place. These articles are going back, and they do need more protective language for our neighborhoods. In both of these bylaws, we would need to consider doing an impact assessment or study of how it would impact the neighborhoods, where it would go. Simply put, when a bylaw has an impact on someone, they need to be informed. The property owners, the abutters, the neighbors, in a certain radius around the property need to be informed during the public hearing process, so any input they have about their property, their neighborhood, and their community can be taken into consideration. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak to this article? Seeing none, all those in favor of the recommendation of the warrant committee, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion is unanimous. We'll move to Article 43. It's recommended that the town vote to amend Section 10 of the general bylaws, known as the zoning bylaws, by redesignating subsection L. of Section 3, the Assisted Living Residents' Development, ALRD, Article 43 on the May 2013 warrant as subsection P. of Section 3. It was submitted by the planning board. Does anyone wish to speak to this article? Ma'am, are you coming down? No. This requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of the recommendation of the warrant committee, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. It's unanimous. Article 44 has been superseded by another blue sheet that you should have received up on the table. Did everyone find that? Everyone caught up with their blue sheet? Since this, again, is a lengthy article, what, there's been a motion to waive the reading, seconded? Discussion on waiving the reading? All those in favor of waiving the reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. We will waive the reading. One explanation. Mr. McLean, would you like to explain the red insert on the article?
Somebody did a number on this microphone. The warrant committee received an offer of a friendly amendment to amend the article that we had put before you to include the sentence that is in red on this paper. It came from Town Meeting Member Arthur Doyle, and he came and presented at our meeting earlier this evening and spoke about his time on the original dog-leash law committee and issues that he has encountered in town, and he feels as though it would be important for anybody who licenses an animal to receive a copy of this. I refer with the town clerk that her process of mailing out the licenses includes a piece of paper, and to include one more piece of paper probably would not exorbitantly increase any postage. It would probably be the printing of the paper and the paper itself. So the warrant committee voted earlier this evening to accept this friendly amendment, which reads in part, "Each dog license issued shall be accompanied by a copy of this bylaw."
Would anyone like to speak to this article? Mr. Howe?
Richard Howe, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 3. I am opposed to the restriction of a leash not exceeding six feet in length. It's a rhetorical question, but how many people have you been accosted by dogs on a leash? I think that a leash is good enough. It doesn't have to be six feet in length, and nowadays, everyone's using these extendo leashes, which I have here to demonstrate. I was going to bring my dog, but I didn't think that would work, but they work very well to control the dog, and so I would like to offer an amendment to the article whereby we strike in Section C. that is labeled restraint. In paragraph 2, it now reads that "Such person shall keep the dog under control by means of a leash or other tethering device not exceeding six feet in length, and of sufficient strength to control the actions of such dog." I contend that it's the responsibility of the owner of the dog to control the dog with whatever leash they have, and I don't think it's necessary to limit the leash size to six feet. In fact, on the way up here, I passed two people who are happily controlling their dogs with these extendo leashes, and I think I speak on behalf of all the dogs in Milton who would like a little more freedom.
Mr. Howe, before you leave, if you're going to make a, was that a motion to amend?
Yes. I move that we amend the article to exclude the words "not exceeding six feet in length," and therefore it would read "shall keep the dog under control by means of a leash or other tethering device of sufficient strength to control the actions of the dog."
Is there a second?
Thank you.
Okay, so everyone can follow along. We're in the front page of the blue article, second paragraph. Is it up on the screen right now? Yes? Mr. Howe, does the writing match your intent?
It's not there yet.
Oh, it's not there yet, I'm sorry. Okay, then I'll read it out loud. So the entire second paragraph would read, "The owner or custodian of a dog which is not on the premises of the owner or upon the premises of another person with the knowledge and express consent of such person shall keep the dog under control by means of a leash or other tethering device of sufficient strength to control the actions of such dog."
That's right. Thank you.
The motion's been made and seconded. Is there a discussion on this motion to amend? Mr. Frizzetti?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Steve Frizzetti, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 7. I was looking at 6, I almost said 6. I actually support this amendment. I do want to say I am not a fan of those retractable leashes. Anyone who's ever been in a dog park with someone with one of those leashes, they wrap around you, and you can go down very easily. However, I work with dogs all the time, and I train dogs, and a lot of times, we'll use like a 20 or 30-foot line when we're training the dogs, so I think this is an unreasonable amendment. Thank you.
Mr. Chinman, you were next. Do you want to speak to this motion, or hold off?
I wanted to speak to the entire article.
She'd like to hold off until later. Thank you. Ma'am, you're recognized?
So I knew there'd be a lot of questions on this. Thank you. The reason this came about at all was because on a daily basis, I receive so many calls about off-leash dogs, and the problems are escalating, and they are escalating in various parts of town, and the bites are also escalating. And just, I looked up all of my records, and these are only reported bites, meaning the dogs that were bitten or the people that were bitten have had medical care, and there are 25 of those in the past year. To me, that's too many. My first priority is to the people of Milton. As an animal control officer, everyone knows I love all animals, and I will fight for all animals, but my first job is to the people of Milton, and those are the bites that most concern me with the off-leash. The language I was most concerned about, which is what we tried to take out of this, was "under control." And as Mr. Frizzetti does know, "under control" is very interpretive. My idea of "under control" is if I'm standing here with a piece of bacon, and your dog is off-leash, you should be able to say, "Buddy, come," and that dog goes to you and not me with the bacon. So I don't know too many dogs that fall under that category of "under control," under voice control, but because that's in here, people use that, and it's very hard for me to do my job and to protect people when someone else is arguing, "Well, they're under my control," when they're saying, "Buddy, come, 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 buddy, 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 come, buddy, come, come, come," which is what I generally tend to see. So that was the main reason. The other parts of this bylaw that we wrote were taken from a lot of others, so the six-foot, I get it. I also cannot stand retractable leashes. I have a permanent scar on my leg from one. They break. I have seen dogs get hit by cars because they run out, and by the time you're pushing that button, it's too late. Anything six feet, I'm only five feet, so another foot on top of me would be a six-foot leash. That's a standard leash, which is why we put the six-foot in there. Other towns have 10 feet. I also use long lines in training when I'm training dogs, so there are places for all of these things to happen. By basic, what I really wanted to get out of this was the fact that the off-leash dogs are not under control, and they are biting, a lot of them, and it can be avoided by having these dogs on a leash. This bylaw does not affect Cunningham Park in the back. That's a private park. I have no jurisdiction over that. So there are places where people can take their dogs off-leash, if that's what they so choose, but especially now, at the parks, we're starting sports seasons. I know, I have no idea where my niece and nephew came from, but they are terrified of I cannot convince them otherwise. They finally got a cat. I'm proud. But if a dog so much as goes within five feet of them, they literally will go into panic attacks. I know a lot of children like this. I know a lot of adults like this, so that needs to be respected as well. And when I do get calls, I have to go out, I have to address it. This bylaw gives me the means to address those problems, I think, in a way that's respectful, because we do have a leash law. If this is not voted in, the other part people that questioned on was the outside tethering, those items are already in force. So the only changes to the current law are the fact of taking out and clarifying dogs must be on leash, and also the three-dog limit. I don't know why some people couldn't have four dogs. I have no problem with that. So we added in that that could be a possibility as well, to give that a little bit more leeway, because some people do have four dogs, and they only license three now, so now they can license their fourth dog if this goes through. All the fines remain the same, and again, it doesn't apply to Cunningham Park where there are off-leash dogs. So I'd be happy, if anyone else has any questions, to clarify or answer them, but that is basically where this bylaw amendment came from, from complaints, from escalating bites, and we hope that you will help me pass this. I am not going out and looking. I'm not coming out with my tape measure. If your dog is under control, not able to get at other people, and your leash is seven or eight feet, I'm terrible at guessing visually, so you'd probably be okay. All right? Thank you.
Before we hear from the warrant committee, would anyone else like to speak to the motion to amend? Mr. McLean, does the warrant committee have a record? Pardon me?
They're voting.
They're voting. Thank you. Can anyone play the piano? Ah, you can speak, yes.
Mr. Moderator, Mary McNamara, Precinct 8. I rise to oppose the amendment. We have a lot of dogs. We have a lot of dog owners who don't understand how to control their dogs. Apparently, no dog has learned how to heel, come to heel, and we have an awful lot of very scared people, regardless of their ages. I'm not afraid of dogs, but I'm very tired of people's very friendly dogs jumping all over me when I prefer they not. I think six feet is very reasonable, and I ask Town Meeting to support that language. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak to the motion? Mr. McLean?
The warrant committee does not support the motion to amend.
Very well. All those in favor of the motion to amend, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
I think the ayes have it. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. We have seven. I could try another voice vote. Would you prefer that? Let's try another voice vote. All those in favor of the motion to amend, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no?
No.
I think the noes have it. One, two, three. Okay, we're gonna count. We're just gonna count. All right. The clerk has picked some assistants in advance to help us count for each of the various So in Section 3, we have Mary Ellen Sweeney-Dumay and Eric Kistner down here to help count. Section 2, Ellen Denoyer and John Folcarelli, and Section 3, Brian Walsh, She Couldn't Escape, Who else have I got? And we'll need all the Town Meeting Members to come down to the front section, please. While everyone is coming down, I'll just reconfirm what we're voting on. So there's currently a motion to amend the article that's before the body. The motion to amend is printed up on the screen, so the motion is to change the article as you see it displayed on the screen. So that's what we're voting on, not the overall article, just the motion to amend it about the six-foot leash, if we're all clear. So what I'd ask everyone to do is, if you are in favor of the motion to amend, please stand up and be counted. I've asked everyone that's in the back that's a Town Meeting Member to please come forward. I know we have some residents that are sitting back there. I know we have some residents that are sitting back there. Yep. Just go doing two. Section 1, 2, 3, you've completed your counts? Yes? All right. Everyone that is standing, please sit. All those opposed to the motion to amend, please stand.
Oh, we are? Okay.
Thanks, everyone. If you could all have a seat. Now, we just wanted to make sure we got the front selectmen's tables here counted. So with all those in the front two tables, the board of selectmen and the warrant committee in favor of the motion to amend, please stand one more time, and Mr. Walsh and Ms. Musto will count. So warrant committee and board of selectmen, in favor of the motion to amend, please stand. We just missed you on the first count. If you're in favor of the motion to amend in warrant committee or selectmen. Okay, those opposed on the warrant committee and selectmen.
We're all set on that.
We're all set now?
Yeah.
Okay. So I'll start with Section 1. Could you call out your counts, yeses and nos?
Yes.
Mr. Rissner or Ms. Sweeney just need to say it out publicly.
Uh, yes, 13. No, 25.
And Mr. Rissner confirms that? Okay. Section 2?
Yes, 56. No, 46.
So yes, 56, no, 46? And Section 3, including the front tables?
Yes, 29. No, 40.
Four, zero?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you. I'm just checking my math, as I'm sure you will. Folks, we've confirmed the yeses are 98, the nos are 111. So the motion to amend is defeated. So that puts us back to the original article. Would anyone like to speak to the original article? Mr. Chinman, I think you are next. You're recognized.
Actually, Mr. Whiteside.
Mr. Whiteside, Major? I'm happy to defer. Mr. Whiteside?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Michael Chinman, Precinct 2. I oppose the article, and I can't emphasize enough how special Cunningham Park is. Milton is constantly rated one of the best places to live, and Mary Cunningham has a large contribution to that ranking right now. The back part of Cunningham Park is just a special place with a network of trails, different terrain packed. You can't believe the different terrain packed in such a small area. And a lot of people in Milton don't even know about it. If you don't have a dog, you may not know about it. And I'm talking about the area that's south of the barn. So, I'm sorry? It presses onto the golf course, and beyond that is the Blue Hills. It's just a wonderful nature area, and it's all hours of daylight populated by Milton dogs and Milton dog owners. And my problem is that I've heard the animal control officer say that this will not affect that. I've read the comment of the warrant committee saying this will not affect that. And I don't know what article they're reading, because it seems clear to me it does affect that. And the language in particular that I want to emphasize, it's part of Section C, the third paragraph. "Under no circumstances shall a dog, including but not limited to a dog on a leash or other tethering device, be allowed on private property," which is what Cunningham Park is. It's not a public park. It's private property, "unless specific permission of the property owner has been expressly granted." You know, words have meanings, and words in laws especially have meanings. So there's two words there that I wonder why they're in there if they don't have a meaning. And I'm talking about specific and expressly. Specific permission of the property owner has to be granted. Specific, in law, specific is as opposed to general. Right now Cunningham Park has general permission. I don't know a dog owner who's ever gotten specific permission from Cunningham Park to walk their dog there. There's expressly granted, expressly in the law is as opposed to implied. And again, Cunningham Park has signs up. They imply that dog walking is allowed there. It doesn't say, "Welcome, dog walkers." It says, "Dogs must be on a leash." So, and I'll get to that part in a second about the leash. So this language had to be put in deliberately, specific permission. Why was it put in? No one gets specific permission. Expressly granted, it doesn't say anywhere in Cunningham Park that off-leash dogs are allowed. It's not on the signs. In fact, the signs are to the contrary, because there's an understanding by the park, by the dog walkers, and by the animal control officer, that if you stay south of the road that goes past the barn, you're okay. If your dog is under your control, you're okay off-leash. In fact, the animal control officer had announced that years ago. We're not gonna enforce that. And Cunningham Park, they don't say it. They don't want people coming from everywhere thinking there's this dog park there, and the signs say dogs must be on leash. But it's understood. Everybody knows you're okay in this network of trails. And I know some people might feel like, okay, that network of trails, why can't non-dog walkers go there without encountering dogs? Let me tell you. There was a posting on Milton neighbors recently about someone who took their children to Chickatabbet and encountered activities there that was not consistent with bringing children there. You don't see that in the back network of trails that go all over Cunningham Park, because there's dogs and dog walkers all the time there. There's a beneficial aspect to what happens with dogs and dog walkers at Cunningham Park. So it's a special place. I don't know if it's purposeful or just inadvertent, but this will change it. And I read in the warrant committee's comments, "This article would not limit the ability of private property and private park owners to grant permission for off-leash dogs." Well, this article sure is gonna affect it, because the next paragraph says that "in any prosecution under this section, the presence of such dog at large and without a restraint," meaning no leash, which is what happens right now in the back part only of Cunningham Park, "shall be prima facie evidence that such knowledge and permission was not had." Prima facie evidence is a fancy word for there's sufficient evidence. So to prove the point. So if the dog is off-leash, according to the plain language of this article, that's sufficient evidence by itself. No more proof is needed that the property owner did not grant permission for that off-leash dog activity. I have a lot of faith in our current animal control officer. I hear her say she's not going to enforce it, she's not gonna have her ruler out, and I'm sure she's gonna leave the back part of Cunningham Park alone. I don't know who the next animal control officer is, and I don't wanna put faith into individuals. I wanna put the faith into the law. This is gonna change things. And I'm not sure that this can be quickly amended on the floor here to accommodate, which I'm telling you, if you haven't been there, is one of the most special reasons of living in Milton. It's beautiful there. And, you know, the dog owners get together in a group and walk around together, and you don't even need to know the other people in the group, because the dogs don't care that they don't know the other people in the group. The dogs start playing, and the owners walk around together, and you meet your neighbors, and you talk to them, and it's just, it's a wonderful part of living in Milton. And I beg in town meeting, don't mess it up. It's a great place. This article will mess it up. It may be unintended, but it'll mess it up. So, Mr. Moderator, I guess I would like to move to send this back to further consideration. I don't think dog owners have been adequately heard, and I don't think the warrant committee had correct information, because there's some errors in their comment. For example, their comment says, "Dogs are not now permitted to be off-leash on public property at any time." That's not true. The current dog leash ordinance, which we have one, this isn't, it's not like we don't have an ordinance if this doesn't get passed. Bear with me one second. The current ordinance says that dogs that are off their owner's premises have to be in the immediate restraint and control of some person by means of a leash or by effective command, which is what the animal control officer was talking about, that she wants to get rid of the effective command part. You know, that's something we can talk about and debate, but let's not say there's no change here. We're eliminating effective command as a possibility of restraining your dog. That is not what the warrant committee's comment says. It's contradicting that. So I think not enough thought's been put into this, how it will affect Cunningham Park. And if Cunningham Park was in favor of this language, if this was endorsed by them, I'd be backing off, because they're the private property owner, they get to set the rules. But by tradition and practice over decades, that's not their position, and I don't think it's been communicated to the warrant committee that that's their position, because the warrant committee doesn't perceive that this is having any effect on private parks. It's not intended to be a change. So there's all sorts of reasons why this is not a good article as written. I move that it be sent back to the board of selectmen for further consideration.
Is there a second? Okay, we have a motion to refer this back to the board of selectmen. Would anyone like to speak to the motion to refer back to the board? Mr. Whiteside?
I support the motion to refer back to the selectmen, because this article has a number of other problems. But Paragraph 3 is definitely a problem. It says, "Under no circumstances shall a dog, including but not limited to a dog on a leash or other tethering device, be allowed on private property unless specific permission of the property owner has been expressly granted." What if the property owner lives in Illinois and leases the property? What happens then? Can the lesssee allow a dog? Lesssee is not the property owner. Writing a warrant article, writing an article that's going to go into the bylaws is writing a law. And when you write a law, you've got to be very careful that it says exactly what you want it to say, and that there are no unintended consequences, and that there are no areas of omission. And I would suggest that this, the failure to cover lesssees or renters is an omission. The article talks about people being issued a fine. I'm not exactly sure how you get issued a fine, but if you get issued a fine, then apparently a notice to license within seven days is sent out. Once again, there's no specifics, but it's very important, because after that notice to license within seven days is sent out, then for every week, every week that you don't license the dog without any further notice, you incur another $50. So if for any reason you lose out, you don't license the dog for the entire year, you could be fined $1,500 with only one notice that you haven't licensed the dog. And that's just not fair. There probably should be a definition of household, because the household has the three-dog limit. What are, exactly what is the meaning there? The expressed consent by the property owner needed in all cases. What if a family member consents? Is that, that's not good enough. It has to be the property owner that consents. It's not reasonable. "Under no circumstances is a dog allowed on private property without the consent of the property owner." What about a dog in a car? Well, you know, dogs ride in cars. My paper was delivered by a deliverer who had a dog in the car. He pulled in the driveway and threw out the paper. Violation of the zoning.
Mr. Whiteside, you made some valid points. You're well within your time. Would you like to continue making more valid points, or do you think you've made the...
I'll make just one more valid point. Owner is, owner who has a dog loose on the property is supposed to make every... Writing a warrant article, writing an article that's going to go into the bylaws is writing a law. And when you write a law, you've got to be very careful that it says exactly what you want it to say and that there are no unintended consequences and that there are no areas of omission. And I would suggest that this, the failure to cover lesses or renters is an omission. The article talks about people being issued a fine. I'm not exactly sure how you get issued a fine, but if you get issued a fine, then apparently a notice to license within seven days is sent out. Once again, there's no specifics, but it's very important because after that notice to license within seven days is sent out, then for every week, every week that you don't license the dog, without any further notice, you incur another $50. So for, if for any reason you lose out, you don't license the dog for the entire year, you could be fined $1,500 with only one notice that you haven't licensed the dog. And that's just not fair. There probably should be a definition of household because the household has the three dog limit. What are, exactly what is the meaning there? The expressed consent by the property owner needed in all cases. What if a family member consents? Is that, that's not good enough. It has to be the property owner that consents. It's not reasonable. Under no circumstances is a dog allowed on private property without the consent of the property owner. What about a dog in a car? You know, dogs ride in cars. My paper was delivered by a deliverer who had a dog in the car. He pulled in the driveway and threw out the paper. Violation of the zoning.
Mr. Whiteside, you've made some valid points. You're well within your time. Would you like to continue making more valid points? Or do you think you've made the...
I'll make just one more valid point. An owner who has a dog loose on the property is supposed to make every effort to deter the dog from being able to freely exit. The dog doesn't have to exit if the property owner doesn't make every effort to prevent this. So the dog can remain on the property and the bylaw can be violated. It's just not a good choice of language. It's not the way a bylaw should be written. And so I think Mr. Chinman has a good point, that this should be sent back for some more work.
Thank you very much. Mr. Stone, I believe you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Jeff Stone, Precinct One. First of all, I would like to congratulate you, Mr. Moderator, for your first town meeting. It's run rather smoothly, and I think you deserve a round of applause. Also, I'd like to say for the record, I'm a graduate of Milton High School. Jay Nolan knows it. Okay, so I rise to oppose this amendment. I mean, there are certainly sincere arguments on both sides of this issue. Officer Bersani has worked, labored long and hard for years. She loves all animals. I believe she loves all animals. I believe that this article really responds to needs in the town of Milton, which she has laid out. Many, many complaints, problems, dog bites, unleashed dogs. It's rampant, by the way, in DCR parks. The lack of enforcement is terrible. If you hike in parks all over, as I do, you see this all the time. About half the dogs are unleashed. There are a lot of irresponsible dog owners. So I think this really, it's not perfect. As Mr. Whiteside said, it may not be perfect, but the value and the benefit of this article so much outweighs the imperfections, and we can fix them later if necessary. I extremely doubt that Cunningham Park is going to be a site of problem. I think it's going to remain the open dog-walking place that it is. I trust Officer Bersani that that's not going to be enforced there. If it ever was, we can change it. I'm sure the Cunningham Park people would have something to say about that. So I urge that we vote no on this amendment and that we afterwards vote yes on the article. Thank you.
Mr. Murd? I believe that's Mr. Murd.
Governor, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Six. I agree with Mr. Whiteside and Mr. Chinman. I think that this article needs some more work. I wasn't really, I was going to do some more research on this, but I brought in last year's annual warrant, the annual report, and it shows that for unlicensed and unleashed, it doesn't break it out, but the total number of fines was a little bit over $1,000. I agree, we want to protect our residents and we want to protect our children from animal bites, but it doesn't appear that at least last year, that there were a significant number of unleashed dogs because there weren't a lot of fines. So then I got, you know, my annual report today in the mail, and it doesn't list anything about unleashed dogs or unlicensed dogs. So it's hard to tell whether or not there's been an increase or a decrease. But I think it's very clear, we have a leash law that's been in effect for a long, long time. If the issue is, you know, one of about not being leashed, I think we should just address that, and maybe we could do some friendly amendment on that, or better yet, send it back for more clarification. Thank you.
Ms. Denoyar?
Thank you. Ellen Denoyar, Precinct Two. I have, I'm in favor in general of having a more robust animal control, sorry, whatever this is, leash law. But I do have a question about dogs not being allowed on private property without permission. What I'm trying to envision is a conventional street with a sidewalk, and there's a tree lawn between the sidewalk and the street, and I imagine that that is public property. But then on the house side of the sidewalk where my lawn starts, that's private property. So I can imagine that someone can walk a dog on a sidewalk and the dog can only go to one side but not the other. And then I'm imagining a street where there's no sidewalk. So now the lawn goes right up to the curb, and that's private property, I assume. So now on that street, you can walk a dog, but they're only allowed in the street. So I'm just trying to understand, I'm in favor of having control. I think as a property owner, I should be able to say whether a dog is on my property or not, but I want to understand exactly how it would work. And I don't know whether you want to answer that or whether that's just part of referring the article back, so.
Do you have a specific question you'd like to address, or is this just something the board of selectmen to consider?
I guess it's something to consider.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Zulus, and I think that may be our last speaker. No, Nancy's waiting, I'm sorry. Do you have a, you can reply to that? Oh, you're waiting, okay. Why don't Mr. Zulus and we'll wrap with Nancy. Thank you.
Sure. Mike Zulus, Precinct Three, Town Meeting Member, Mr. Moderator. I agree with Mr. Whiteside and Mr. Chinman with respect to the language, and I even, I don't see an exception for Cunningham Park in paragraph two of subsection C either. So I think there's a problem there. However, and so I think there are problems with the language. However, I am persuaded by Mr. Stone that on balance, the needs of that outweigh the imperfections of the language, and so I'm going to vote in favor of this article for that reason.
And Ms. Bersani, did you wish to clarify? No. So this...
I missed what he said at the end, I'm sorry, I apologize.
You would like to speak?
Oh, okay then. Excellent. I am so glad I'm not a lawyer. This, oh, Lord, this wording stuff, I can't imagine any bylaw or regulation that could possibly encompass every single possible scenario. So kudos to those people who try to do this. Cunningham Park is private. Cunningham Park, I met with the dog walkers there two years ago, and last year we came to an agreement because off-leash was everywhere. The agreement was off-leash would be at the back of the park so that the front of the park people could walk without worrying about dogs. We felt it was a really good compromise. I have spoken with the trustees several times. Is there, do I have anything in writing? No. Actually, what's in writing for Cunningham Park is no dog allowed off-leash ever anywhere. That's actually in writing for Cunningham Park. So it was a compromise. Whether I could get it in writing, I'm not sure, but that's Cunningham Park, and no, I do not want to be back there, believe me. I have enough to do. But as for the wording, I apologize, I really didn't think this would take up this much time, either way. I had no intentions of keeping people here over this. But I'm not trying to change the wording. All we meant was, we don't want dogs, I don't want my dog running on my neighbor's property. It's rude, and my dog is going to pee and poop over there, and that's rude. I have enough pee and poop in my yard. I don't need others. I don't want their dog over my yard without me saying, "Sure, come on over and play." That's great. But we have dogs who people just let out the back door, and they're not going to stay on your property, and they're fenced, and they're running, and I'm getting calls. The neighbor's dog is always on my property. I don't want him there. So again, it's just a matter of giving me the tools to try to enforce what should be enforced. Most people are great, they're wonderful, I love them, they have common sense, they keep their dogs so they need to be, and it's great. But there are some people who just, you know, don't abide by that, and when people call me and say, "Why aren't you doing your job? You know, this dog is over my property, you've done nothing," it's tough. So it's giving me a little bit behind me to be able to do things. And as for the fines, if I don't see a dog off-leash, I'm not going to fine you because it's a he-said, she-said. So as for how many fines I actually give out, that's hard too because I really feel I need to see that dog, and I tell people, "Call me." I get called out at night, I get called out in the morning, I get Facebooked as to, you know, where this dog is, and that's fine. I'm okay with that. Someday I'll actually say no. It's 2:00 in the morning, I'm in bed. But I do appreciate everyone reaching out, but I cannot fine you and finding meaning giving out a citation. Again, most of this stuff is state law anyway, and a lot of it, if it's not state law, it has been a Milton bylaw for years, but people just don't think about it or read it, and because we're bringing it up, obviously we're getting some controversy. As for the wording, I can't do that. I am not good at that. It did go before town council. It has gone back and forth a few times. This is what we ended up with, and, you know, if there are, if you don't agree with it, I have to be okay with that. So I hoped you would, but if there are more issues than I can even understand, if someone can actually come up with exact wording that you'd be happy with, as I said, I don't think it's possible to cover every scenario for any law. I just don't. So in good faith, this is what we tried, and that's, you know, I hope I answered some of your questions. Thanks. But not all of them.
Is there a question from the audience? No, okay.
No? No, done.
We have an opinion on the warrant committee just on this article?
The warrant committee is... The warrant committee is voting now, but I just wanted to make a comment with regard to what I said at the very beginning of the debate on this article, the amendment that Mr. Doyle raised. Many of the issues that folks raised tonight in terms of concerns for what's written on this paper are currently the law in effect in the town of Milton with the standing bylaw that we have. Right now, Mr. Chinman, the law does not allow, the law does not preclude Cunningham Park from saying dogs are allowed off-leash there, and this would not preclude Cunningham Park from saying dogs are not allowed off-leash there. It would not change private property owners' rights to say, "You may come on my property
Okay, thank you. Well, what I prefer to do is, I think we've heard from everyone, they had a chance to speak, the warrant committee was the last voice on their opinion. So right now we're voting on the motion to refer back to the board of selectmen. That's all. So, all in favor of the motion to refer back to the board of select... I thought you, I thought you gave us an opinion.
Mr. Moderator, that was my comment, but I have to now read to you the vote of the warrant committee.
I misunderstood, I thought I had to vote.
The warrant committee does not support the motion to refer back.
Okay. Now, all in favor of the motion to refer this back to the board of selectmen, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no.
No.
The motion fails. So, we are now left with the article as written on the blue sheet. I assume there's no final discussion. I see no one rising to speak to this article. This requires a majority vote as a bylaw change. All in favor of approving the article, sorry, all those in favor of the recommendation of the warrant committee, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no.
No.
The motion carries. With that, we are on to article 45. Just, it's going to be a quick one, and then Chairman Hurley asked for a moment just to acknowledge someone in the audience tonight. So, Article 45, "The Milton Playground Players Respectfully submits this petition to see what sum of money the town of Milton would commit to join our efforts in the renewal of the town's four existing playgrounds." It's recommended that the town vote no appropriation at this time. Mr. McLean?
The warrant committee would just like to publicly thank those members of the Milton Playground Planners for taking up Citizens Initiative by trying to improve some of the property in town that frankly, the town should have invested in a while ago. The Parks Department can only do so much with outdated equipment, and this is one of those areas where we probably need to make an investment. The warrant committee has recommended that the town vote no appropriation at this time under this article, but please know that Town Meeting approved the other night Article Six, which included $125,000 request from the Parks Department to upgrade playground equipment. The Parks Department has agreed to work in conjunction with the Playground Planners to put some of their money towards the efforts of the Playground Planners. So they're going to work in conjunction, keep working towards their overall goal of raising far more money than that.
I assume no one wants to speak to this motion? All those in favor of the recommendation of the warrant committee, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no.
No.
The motion carries. Chair recognizes Mr. Hurley before we dissolve.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'd like to actually do two things right now. First, I'd like to recognize our town administrator, whoops, losing this thing. Our town administrator, Anne Marie Fagan, who has been our town administrator for, is it four years, Anne Marie? Four years. And you've been the assistant town administrator for how many before that? 16, so. And before that, an employee of the town in other capacities. So Anne Marie's been with us for a very, very long time. I don't know anybody, anybody that works any harder or is more passionate in what she does. Anne Marie, earlier this year, decided it was time to retire. This may be, although we're not positive, this may be her last town meeting as town administrator. We currently have a search committee for a new town administrator. Anne Marie has graciously said that she will stay on until such time as a new town administrator is appointed, but I'd just like to take a minute to thank Anne Marie for all of her I've often said, if you break her pay down to an hourly rate, it probably comes out to about a buck and a half an hour. And the second thing I'd like to do is, this group of people over on my right, I was one of them for many, many years, and they work so hard, and they don't get enough credit for all the hard work that they do. So I'd just like to recognize Lee and the entire warrant committee.
So ladies and gentlemen, thank you for all arriving on time. Thank you for your generous spirit and decorum. I think your voters would be proud. I'll adjutant your motion to dissolve. Seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. We are dissolved. Thank you very much.